Okay, let's open our meeting. It is 6:30. Just then I want to announce that this hearing and meeting is being broadcast on local cable TV and is being recorded for later broadcast. We have a number of agenda items and to the board, unless there's any objection, I think I'd like to take our items out of water and go straight to the public hearing section.
Go ahead.
I'm okay with that. Okay, then, this is a public hearing. I'm gonna open that public hearing by reading the legal notice that was posted for it. The Rutland Planning Board will hold a public hearing pursuant to Mass General laws, Chapter 48, Section 5, on Tuesday, April 23rd, 2019 at 6:30 PM in the Select Board Meeting Room, 280 Main Street, Rutland, Mass. To consider A, technical corrections to delete text references in the bylaw to industrial district and multifamily residence district, and B, creation of a new bylaw article titled Development Rate Limitation Bylaw, which would limit the number of building permits that could be issued for new dwelling units. These amendments are available for review in the Town Clerk's Office in Community Hall, 250 Main Street, and the Planning Board Office located in the Annex, 246 Main Street. This was advertised the previous two Mondays, I believe, in the Telegram?
Mr. Sheehan, that's correct. It was advertised on the 8th and then on the 15th.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I am gonna take the public hearing issues in the order. The first two, I think we'll go through very, very quickly. The first zoning amendment bylaw is to delete references in the text to the industrial zone. Just a little bit in the way of explanation. A number of years ago, the town adopted two new industrial zone districts. One was called Light Industrial, in quotes. The other was called Light Industrial/Office. All of the existing industrially zoned land in Rutland was reclassified into one of those two zones. Therefore, there is no land zoned, quote, "industrial." It's either Light Industrial or Light Industrial/Office. That language is still in the text of the bylaw. It is not needed. It actually is confusing. And very, very simply, it does not change the zoning of any parcel of land in the town. It's just getting rid of something that is not really needed anymore. So, first of all, and this is gonna be the order I'm gonna follow. First of all, ask for comments from the board, and then if there are any comments from the public on this particular article. So, any comments?
I have no comments.
I have none.
I would say that these two zonings, parcels are not on the map either, on an official map.
They are not shown on the map, correct. Okay, any comments from the public on this one? Yes?
I think maybe for the cameras, since I know so many meetings generally with planning board have not been available to people on YouTube, could you explain what is going to change relative to any applicants for zoning for these parcels?
Nothing. Absolutely nothing. It's superfluous language that has no meaning anymore.
Is it? Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, the second change is similar. It is going to be to remove any language regarding multifamily residence district. To be perfectly honest with you, I have no idea, I don't think any of us have, how this particularly got written into our zoning bylaw. There is no land in Rutland that is zoned multifamily residence. There is multifamily housing allowed in our town center and village center districts, and those bylaws provide the language that is necessary for that. And therefore, once again, it simply is something that has no use in our bylaws. It is, I guess I would also say, probably rather antiquated. And should there be a need to create something like that, certainly, it would be a whole package where a new bylaw would be written, and then particular land might actually be zoned that way. So, once again, it does not change anything. It's just getting rid of something that is not needed anymore.
And it's not on any map either.
Once again, any questions, comments from the board?
No questions, comments.
Any questions or comments from the public? None, very good. Okay, then, on to, I guess I'm gonna say, I'm sure the one that most all of you are here for. And this is to, I guess I'm gonna say, discuss, review, whatever, a rate limitation bylaw. I guess a little bit in the way of history. First of all, this has kind of come as an outgrowth of the Growth Management Steering Committee with the help of CMRPC and others. And it includes, first of all, a cap on the total number of dwelling, new dwelling units allowed. It also places some other restrictions on how those permits are issued. It also provides for some exemptions, most particularly for senior housing, and also for individual lot owners. I believe there were copies of the text available outside here for all of you to read. I'm not gonna go through reading the entire bylaw. That would simply just be, take a very, very long time to go through all of that. So, with that, I'll go again with any comments from the board, comments or questions from the board?
Nope. I think everybody's done their due diligence and working on it, except for the public.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Let's let it rip.
Let's let it rip, okay. Before we do begin, first of all, if you do wish to speak on this, actually, this is what this hearing is truly all about. I would ask that you do go to the podium, announce who you are. And to be perfectly honest with you, sometimes these things can just kind of go off the deep end. If you have something to say, please say it. But I just kind of have to keep in mind, I once had a priest that I befriended, who was a very, very good speaker. And he said whenever he got up to speak anywhere, he tried his best to follow three basic rules. Number one, be good. Number two, be brief. Number three, be gone. And I would like to, you know, just employ you to, please, you know, keep in mind that going on and on and on probably is not actually gonna be a great, great benefit to you. And particularly, you know, if someone has gotten up and said something that, you know, you really do agree with, and you say you really, you know, you feel you agree with it, rather than going through the whole thing so we hear the whole thing again, get up and just say, yes, I agree with so-and-so said. You know, so that we can kind of keep this thing moving. So, with that, and I will give, I'm not sure if this is really right or not, but I'm going to. I wanna give at least a first preference to any member of the Select Board that would like to get up and speak.
I'd be happy to give a synopsis of the process of the Managed Growth Steering Committee, and brought us together and to this phase right here. Is that okay?
Briefly? Briefly?
Make sure to state that you're the chairman of the Steering Committee.
So, Jeff Stillings, Board of Selectmen, also a chair of the Managed Growth Steering Committee. Managed Growth Steering Committee is an ad hoc committee with representatives from each of the major town boards, the Planning Board, Board of Health, the Board of Selectmen, Conservation Commission. I believe that's everybody.
And a member of CMRPC.
And CMRPC, Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, as a technical advisor. And the Steering Committee was formed in part of a two-phase process organized by CMRPCs, which actually began in 2017, two years ago in there. And part of that process included this multidisciplinary team to try and put forward what we have tonight is a change of the zoning bylaw. Because it's a zoning bylaw, it does fall under the jurisdiction of the Planning Board, and it also requires such a public hearing as we're having tonight. So, we're also blessed to have the writer of the Phase 1 and the Phase 2 from CMRPC, Mr. Ron Baron, here tonight to answer any of the technical questions that those two phases drew upon as inspiration for the need, the catalyst for the need of an amendment to our zoning bylaws in there. Couple of highlights from the studies that kind of prompted further action by the Steering Committee from the different phases. That Rutland's been growing 27% a decade since the 1990s. And we currently have about 400 subdivision parcels approved but not yet built. So, the study showed what the ramifications would be, the worst-case scenario, should Rutland develop all developable land. And not to go into the numbers, but it did show that it would drastically affect water and sewer capabilities. We would almost immediately go over the primitive limits currently if the houses, the existing houses right now that were able to connect to water and sewer did so, we would immediately be over capacity by 48,000 gallons of water per day and 44,000 of sewer per day. And as a result of the study, there were basically six options presented by Central Mass Regional to the town of Rutland. The first being to request an increase in the daily water draw, to negotiate the increase in the sewer rate, possibly tapping into another water resource, enacting a town growth management bylaw, establishing a water and sewer district, or enacting a downzoning and upzoning of bylaw. So, with the exception of tapping into the aqueduct at this time, the Steering Committee concurred with five of the six recommendations to take future action. And the first of which is tonight's hearing for the enacting of a managed growth bylaw in there. So, that's all I have right now. If you have technical questions, again, you can refer to Central Mass Regional. Thank you.
Okay, anyone in the audience would like to get up and speak to this? Mr. Blair?
Mr. Chairman, Lee Blair from Blair Builders. A little bit late here and she'll drive. So, I have, I have a lot of questions. So, can I at least have a little bit of time to kind of present what I'm? Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was okay. So, I kind of wrote something down so I kept my thoughts in a more of a managed area. So, there's residents in town that have strong feelings to limit new construction. There's also residents that believe that new growth is good for the town. The stronger, there's not a group that isn't sure about the impact of new growth, especially as it relates to the town budget. There are two studies done by CMRPC funded by a grant through District Local Technical Assistance Program. I'd like to take this opportunity to highlight some of the data that was uncovered during the Phase 1 and Phase 2 studies. All the statistics are available for download via the town website, and the meetings are available to view on YouTube. That's what I'm gonna present. Tax revenue. Critical number that was discussed at the board's March 18th meeting was the break-even point for property values. This was the Steering Committee, boy. A home loan is valued below $300,000, costs the town more in services than it provides in property taxes. That's quoted in the study. Therefore, obviously, homes valued in excess of $300,000 provide the town a positive revenue. According to the town website, the average single-family home value was $287,000. That shows that on average, the current makeup of homes in town costs the town more in services than it receives in property taxes. We would all benefit from having that average brought up to or in excess of $300,000. Keep in mind the break-in point of $300,000. The Phase 1 study showed on page eight that it used $271,000 for the future value of all homes in the study. However, the next sentence in the report shows that the average sale price for the single-family home in Rutland for the prior 10 years was actually $370,000. The study claims the reason for the deficit value of $100,000 was used for the property tax calculation is due to the difference in the methods that are used to calculate assessed value versus the sale price. A quick call to the town assessor confirmed that, in fact, the assessed value should be expected to be within 5% of the sale price. Even if you peel off the full 5%, that would still average over $350,000 for the tax value of new homes. Not only do those homes, new homes, provide positive revenue stream for the town, it would weight the average of homes in town to a higher number, helping close any gap in revenue versus spending. During the past phase of growth in town, a new DPW facility, a new fire/policeman facility, and a new library are all built. No one is proposing that new facilities will be built. Possibly adding a new vehicle or some new personnel could be warranted for additional residents. However, the cost for the new facilities is still in the town budget. All the new residents help spread the cost over greater numbers, which helps the cost per resident to decline. Phase 1 study does not account for those economics and presumes a linear cost per person as shown on page nine. The Phase 1 study specifically omits A&R lots. Put simply, those are lots on existing roadways, not part of a subdivision. What the study neglects to mention is that if a public way has five houses on it, the entire public way must be maintained by the town, including portions of the road that are absent homes. If that same road has an additional 15 homes built on it, the amount of road being maintained by the town is not increased. But the tax revenue is much greater due to the increased density. That's another benefit to the budget that the study fails to recognize. Lastly, homes inside a subdivision are on roads that are maintained by the builder until most or all the homes are built and the town takes over the roads. Oftentimes, that means years that the town is collecting taxes on all new homes in the subdivision, yet not spending any time or money maintaining them. Eventually, when the roads are completed to spec, the town accepts the roads and their maintenance. During the entire interim, the roads remain in the ownership of the builder, taxing revenue was collected in full, yet not a dollar spent on road maintenance. The next item that I wanna go over is students. Legitimate area concern for expenditures is the student population. According to the Phase 2 study, shown on slide 10, the students per household is .55. If you check the calculations, you'll see it appears to be in mathematical error. It's actually .51. Using the latest number from the Phase 2 study of .51 students per household, with the total bill that of 400 homes contemplated in the Phase 1 study, the number of students would be around 200. And that's presuming that every student is new to the district instead of migrating from within the district. No, it doesn't account for the students that will graduate each year out of the district throughout the buildup phase or any of the other caveats noted in the study. The Phase 1 study estimated the potential for over 500 additional students. A closer look at the methodology in the Phase 1 study shows that instead of using the same population data for the calculations that they used in the Phase 2 study, a small sample of just three roads. They used three roads, and they said, here's what's on these three roads, and that's how we're gonna extrapolate to get to the student growth. Further looking at the data available from the mass.edu website, student rolls in Rutland have declined by nearly 14% over the last 10 years. The Phase 1 study showed that there were only about 90 slots open in Rutland for students. Seems unlikely, seeing that there were 167 more students in the Rutland school system 10 years ago, and those empty seats could be added to the 90 that were currently available. Population. When considering the town population, which is the principal focus in these studies, it's found that the population has grown steadily since 1990. Looking at the chart, the chart from the study, Page 2 and Phase 1 study, it shows steady growth within the red line above the number of building permits issued by year. So, it shows the number of years on the chart, and then above it, it shows the line of population growth. One, hold on a second, I lost my place here. One important reveal not mentioned in the study, yet clearly shown on the graph, is how the number of building permits is decoupled from the notion that it is the primary driver of the population increase. While the number of building permit drops precipitously around 207, population increases at the same rate it has since 1990. That's in your study. Pace of growth. Another finding in the Phase 1 study is that the complete buildout could occur by 2021. That's contemplated, it's written in the study. I brought it up at a last planning board meeting. That was based on two criteria. First, it was determined that the billing department could handle over 80 permits per year. It was coupled with an incorrect assumption that all 400 lots were available for immediate sale. There are multiple builders in town. I can only speak to my own experience in creating saleable lots. At the time of the Phase 1 study, I had a little over 400 lots in six locations myself in various stages with the Planning Board. Although I wasn't consulted during the study, presumably, these are approximately 400 lots focused in that study, or certainly the bulk of them. The study shows a photo of new homes starting in Bryce Estates. That's the one location of the six that was ready for new building permits, and only about 25% of the total lots in the study. One of those lots, only the first phase, of those lots, only the first phase of construction has had new homes built on it as of today. Bryce Estates has five phases, and we can only build one phase at a time. We'd be lucky to sell one phase a year due to not only demand, but the ability to build new roads. It takes time. The study does not account for the pace of a single builder to install roadways, actually completing new home, completing new home construction. That's also not to mention that there are five sites that make it the remainder of lots don't even have all the applicable local, state, and in some cases, federal permitting completed. That alone takes years, and I mean years. It's a complete mischaracterization to say that the lots may be built out by 2021. If that's the case, I'd be on target to close 100 and 130 homes by the end of this year in Bryce Estates. To this date, I count 18 closed in Bryce Estates, and I'm covering only have two others under construction. The lots in front of the Planning Board, that are the focus of Phase 1 study, are not only not available for sale now, it will take years to be ready for the market. That will sharply govern what pace the new homes can be built without any artificial restrictions on building. Growth management bylaw. Based on the questionable conclusions from the study, the Phase 2 study proposes growth management bylaw, among other options. One of the bullet points under the suggestion on slide 18 is that the number of permits is typically based on past performance, average of permits issued over the past two years. Using the latest information available from the Phase 1 study, the last two years of permits would average 53. The suggestion for selecting stillings at the March 18th meeting was 12 to 15 permits. It's not based on past performance, unique to Rutland, but rather arranged based on a template from another town because it has withstood legal review, possibly because it was based on past performances, unique to that town. That suggests quantity has not been revised upward, but still doesn't rise to the level of past performances. Did I say that right? The suggested quantity has been revised upward since the 12 to 15, but still doesn't rise to the level of past performances. It may also give insight to the intention of the bylaw. Encourage everyone to actually read the two studies and reach your own conclusions. Don't just skip to the last page and accept the conclusions of CMRPC. New homes that are being sold in Rutland are beneficial for the budget, not only in the short term, but also in the long term, considering the average sale, which is rising, is well in excess of the break-even value. With a more in-depth look, plus the ability now to put some of the near suggestions to test from time of the study until now, the data in these studies reveal that new homes will reduce the burden on the existing taxpayer. So, that's what I kind of prepared. But at the same time, I'd like to ask a couple of questions. Has anyone spoken to the fire chief and see if there's a real issue with fire protection? Has anyone actually spoken to them to see? Has anyone spoken to the finance committee to see what the effect of no new growth in the budget will do?
Yeah, I have.
What did he tell you?
You mean she that lives with me?
Oh. No, I spoke to the chairman, Tommy.
Tommy, yes.
What did he say? What did they say?
The budget, we don't, we're at, I think it's year four, year five. We're at a basically, I forget the word that she uses.
Break even?
Break even. There's no adder to the budget. So, all we're doing is paying for the 4.8% to the school increase percent. We can't, raises to our people that are working don't happen like they should. We don't have the monies to pay for, like, the town hall that needs refurbishment. None of that money's there. So, with the school budget keeps doing this, and we're not pacing it. That's sort of the synopsis, I guess, is what I'm being told.
But we're putting 14% less students in the schools, so we're actually spending less than we were during the high growth season. But the question I have is, what effect does the new growth have on the budget? And what effect does no new growth have on the budget? Because as far as I know, the assessors gives you an amount of income that they project for the next year. And without new growth in it, am I right, Bronx? Somebody here, somebody say something? So, they give you an amount of income that you're gonna get based upon these, the new growth calculations that they put in there, and so on and so forth. So, what effect is not having any growth?
Well, no, to the chairman, I'm not wrong. We're saying 36 houses. So, we're getting 36 houses' tax revenue, correct, through this growth bylaw, managed growth? So, there is not, no growth.
Let me just make a point to that. Okay. So, for the last 20 years, this town averaged 61 permits. That's according to, I think, the CMRPC study. The last 10 years was 38. So, in 2003, the town attempted one of these managed growth bylaws, and the number of permits they put in in 2003 was actually 56. We averaged, through the economy alone, 61. Yeah, we had a little bit of growth then, but it got bad, so that the economy took care of it. So, the 36 permit, the 61 permits over 20 years, there was no cap. So, the average was 61. If you cap it at 36, what's the average gonna be? Because it's not gonna always hit 36. You're only gonna allow 25% for builder. So, I get nine. Jimmy gets nine. Dave gets nine. Mark gets nine. George gets, you know. So, the point is that I, it would be almost impossible to take a purchase and sale agreement because you don't know how long it's gonna take to get a building permit. The number of permits is just so arbitrary, it doesn't make any sense. And I don't know if anybody's given any thought. Number one. Number two, I mean, it says in the purpose and intent of your bylaw, it says that purpose and intent is to ensure that the issuance of building permits for construction and new dwelling units will be consistent with the town's capacity to accommodate new development, provide services to support that development. Services include roads. We get cherry-sheep money for roads. Schools, it's declining, and we have open, and plenty of room in these schools in Rutland. And then I was told at, I think it was that Steering Committee meeting, Sheila may have mentioned that. Fire, not hearing any complaints. Police, not hearing any complaints. You talk about wastewater, and you talk about water draw. And looking for new areas of picking those up. I explained it the last time. There's a specific formula that determines water and sewer usage per household. It's in the TR-16 software program that ever- It's in the TR sixteen software program that every engineering firm uses when they do sewer studies. It's seventy gallons per person times per capita, per parcel. The per capita number for their study is two point seven one. Same in Holden, by the way. Is if you took seventy gallons times two point seven one, you come up with one hundred and eighty-nine gallons per parcel. Now, they, they show in the Phase Two study, two hundred and ninety-five thousand gallons of water and four hundred and fifty thousand gallons of sewer. What are you, what are you contemplating in that? You're going to draw more sewer than you are water? How do you do that? The numbers aren't, the numbers don't make any sense in the study. The last time I looked at, I went to the water and sewer moratorium meeting, and I, I think I'm close in these numbers, but two hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day will be drawn out of Musker Park. Am I close in that? Does anybody remember? Two hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day? And it was, was it point five, five-three-eight? Was that the, the amount of sewage we could put in, in the sewer system?
Yeah, it was, I believe it was point four-nine was the.
No, that's, that's an old number. It's, it's more than that now. It, it escalates up every year.
Point five-five in twenty twenty.
Point five-five in twenty twenty. So in a few months, it'll be point five-five. So if that's five hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day of sewage, if you, a typical home, that, that, those have been built over the last twenty, thirty years, the typical home uses, according to that software study, not my numbers, not this, what the engineers make us use when we get a sewer permit, uses a hundred and eighty-nine gallons of water a day. And you don't put as much sewage in the lines as you do draw water from the reservoir. Because you use it, you know, watering lawns and things like that. So the numbers that they're using, they're telling us that we don't have the sewer and the water capacities. We don't need anything. You've got a hundred thousand gallons of unaccounted-for water that draws out of that reservoir every day. That's seven hundred thousand gallons a week. There was a million gallons a week coming out of there, unaccounted for in the past. Somehow, they've stopped fifty thousand gallons. The problem with the sewer system, if you take a hundred houses, at that number, the TR sixteen tells you to use, a hundred houses puts eighteen thousand nine hundred gallons of sewer into the line for every hundred houses. If there's two hundred houses or two hundred and fifty houses, it's a drop in the bucket compared to what's going on with inflow and infiltration. And what happens is, the water and sewer is an entity upon itself. The, the rates, what you pay for water and sewer pays the water and sewer for the town. So they're not drawing from the town revenues to, to pay for those things. But there's a fixed cost to have a water department and a sewer department. So when you stop people from connecting, you actually start spreading it over, you can spread the cost over more people. To take twenty thousand gallons a day on a hundred new homes out of the reservoir is like peeing in the ocean. It's nothing. But the fact is that it, it happens, that, that everybody puts these numbers on there for design flows. When you have water and sewer issues, when you design a system, you have to design it for peak. So you double everything, and that makes it work in the peak method. So everybody's using their water and sewer in the morning. They use it in the afternoon. But they're not using it at two o'clock in the morning, but they, they base what goes into it on a twenty-four hour period. So you design for peaks so that your, your capacity can hold it, but it's not what actually goes into the system and what's actually drawn from the reservoir. It, it, it doesn't work that way. So when you do a sewer study to see what you're adding to the, to the existing studies, you use that TR sixteen number. So these numbers, I, I, they don't make any sense. And if I looked at them correctly on the Phase Two study, I tried to go through it quick, that there's around two hundred and eighty-five thousand gallons of water and four hundred and ninety thousand gallons of sewer, and it's just not, there's, there's no way that you can draw less water and put more sewer into the system, okay? And I'm getting my walking papers in. Thank you for your time. I truly appreciate it.
I'm coming, I'm coming back to the board just for a second. Any comments on what Mr. Blair has said from the board?
I was looking for the word norm, level funding. We haven't been able to level fund our services for, I think it's three or four years. I'm looking for the select board, if I remember right.
I'll, I'll take your turns.
Okay. All right. You'll cover whatever I was mentioning. Perfect.
I can't wait. Yeah, okay. You were up here first.
I'll be really quick.
Go ahead.
So I'm not, excuse me, as prepared as Mr. Blair. And I don't have facts and figures, but I do have children who recently, or, or who came out of Central Tree. I have one in Wachusett High School, excuse me, and one at Bay Path. And I'm not quite sure, I've never heard anybody say that there's plenty of room in any of the schools. As a matter of fact, in Central Tree, when my children were there, they had to use the library as a classroom. So there's no, essentially, people weren't using the library. They were also using other, any room they could get to, to fill children. The new growth, and I don't have the figures on this, but anecdotally speaking, it's young families, more children coming in, there's gonna, they're gonna run out of room. So we talked about new roads, and we talked about new service vehicles, but I don't see any money in the budget for new schools, and, and there really isn't plenty of room.
Excuse me, could you just tell us your name for the record?
Oh, sorry. Judy Coulson, Pleasantville Road.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Okay, quick, quick, let me get up.
Sorry. Thank you. It's Ron Barron, CMRPC. I just wanted to make a couple of notes. I appreciate Mr. Blair going through and reading the, the study. And I wouldn't say that what he has presented is factually inaccurate. However, I think there's some important caveats that need to be expressed. The first thing is that the first half of that study, many pieces of land and housing types were deliberately omitted, because what had happened was in two thousand and seventeen, the town administrator at the time had come to CMRPC, said, hey, we have this pool of parcels that were approved that haven't been done. So could you look at just those parcels? Tell us some sort of projection on how this may affect the town finances going forward, and that's what we did. Having done that, we had looked at a couple of, of the, the old, old master plan and realized that a build-out study hadn't been done in many, many years. So we wanted to do a second piece where we did the build-out analysis, and we saw that we could see how town-wide the amount of available land is and what impact growth might have going forward on that. And that's what this second piece is. So there are two separate studies that are looking at two separate things. Looking at the same, trying to look at the same conclusions, the same outcomes, but we're looking at two different initial data sets. The other piece of it that I just wanted to, to point out is that the, sorry, I wrote down a couple of notes here. What we were really trying to do with the goals of this study was not necessarily to get to this bylaw, but the goals of this study was to look at some of the concerns the town had, say, are your water draw issues relevant? Are the sewer issues relevant? And based on the data that we did collect and some of the assumptions that we put in there, we say that we did find that there is a valid concern on some of these growth issues that they're seeing. The committee, the steering committee that was put together decided to use this as a first step, but there was going to be additional things that the town is going to look at, that the committee is going to want to look at going forward. So this isn't something that the committee came at it, and definitely not CMRPC didn't come at it, with the idea that this goal is to produce this bylaw. This is something that came out of the discussions and the deliberations about the data we were finding. So I just wanted to make those clarifications before we go forward, to make sure that we're on the same topic and context here.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Someone else? Well, Sheila, did you want to get up and?
What?
Well.
Somebody coming in soon.
Yep.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Mitch, for City. I live on Fort Rattle Drive, right up by Norman, actually. He's a good neighbor. There's that. I've been following the process quite a bit. I serve here in town on CIPC with Harry. I've helped raise money for the community center here in town. I try to get involved. I've worked in government, and that's a bad word, my entire life around these issues. Worked for the City of Worcester's Housing Division. I served on a governor's economic development cabinet, and I currently work for the State Department of Higher Education, as well as owning a small firm that does a lot of what CMRPC does. I've had the pleasure of working with CMRPC on several different initiatives when I was at the City of Worcester. My wife and I moved here about a year and a half ago. We thought this would be a great town to, to raise a family. My wife and I are now expecting, so we're really excited about the opportunity of raising a family here. When this issue comes up, you know, I don't view this as necessarily a building issue. I have a couple of concerns regarding what's being proposed. In addition to some issues with the study, primarily the comparable communities that were included, I think we would all agree that Berry and the Brookfields do not have the same economic drivers, as well as reasons why people would like to move into town, primarily the, the school district being very attractive here, being part of Wachusett Regional. I think growth is hard to manage, right? I mean, in general, you have the Boston metro area is growing. My neighbors commute to Boston every day for work, which is, that's a tough commute in the morning from Rutland. There was a study that was released a few years ago, that a large portion, thirty percent of, of new development homes in Holden, those folks are commuting to Boston every day. So Greater Boston is spreading. You have Worcester that is now going through an economic resurgence with the City Square Project. St. Vincent's is putting in a state-of-the-art new cancer facility that's going to create thousands of jobs in that little complex, and people are going to be looking for places to move with attractive amenities and an attractive school system. It just so happens that Rutland is one of those places. My concern about this, this growth bylaw that's being proposed, and I know that there are other things that were mentioned in the study that I thought were very proactive, that I've seen other committees do very effectively. I thought it was good those were pointed out. My concern is from an economic standpoint. On average, the folks that are moving in have a higher educational attainment than the state average, have a higher median income than the state average. And that means disposable income for economic growth in town. I know that's something we're all excited about and we're looking forward to. We have a brand-new restaurant up the road that just opened, a boutique bakery, which my wife loves very much. And those things exist because business owners invested in this community, knowing that there would be folks in here that would, would patron those businesses. We try to buy everything local here in town. All of our, our meats and our eggs come from Kenton Clark Farm over on Glenwood. So we really try to contribute as much as we can. My concern is that what we're doing is, we're signaling to prospective businesses that we're trying to attract in, that we're no longer going to be accepting an overflow of folks that want to be in a good community that have disposable income. So we're telling them no. And getting back to the St. Vincent's analogy, so I think, if I understand this growth bylaw correctly, if you have a doctor that comes in making over two hundred thousand dollars a year that wants to build a house here in town with one of the builders, or by himself or herself, if they're the thirty-seventh house or the fourth house in a month that's going to be permitted, the answer is no. And I think that that, that sends a red flag to prospective businesses that want to commit here and attract both the workforce and a clientele. And that's my concern. I know there's animosity in town between certain town officials and builders, and I don't want to get involved in that. I'm not pro or anti-anything. This isn't an argument for building. It's just a concern from someone who sees growth happening in the greater Worcester area because of revitalization of that area and us potentially missing out on some of that growth. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Could I correct him, Ron? Can I correct him?
Yep.
The correction of that is that one of the exemptions in this growth bylaw is A and R lots. So if that individual doctor wanted to purchase a lot, that's what we call an A and R, approval not required, he can build a house there, and there's no thirty-six, thirty-six building permit exemption.
Can I ask then a follow-up question to what you just said? In that, so you're distinguishing someone owning a lot, so what's the difference between who owns the lots? Whether it's someone that comes in and wants to build through an A and R lot, or someone that's trying to develop land in town as a business owner?
If it's an A and R lot, there is no distinguishing. But what, what the growth bylaw is talking about, if you read the first page, it's talking about basically subdivision bylaw, or subdivisions. So if a builder was trying to build a large hundred-acre or a hundred parcel lot, they're only looking to give out thirty-six permits a year. But on exemption five C, a single approved not required, which is called an A and R lot, is allowable.
Right. So that doctor couldn't live in the subdivision if they wanted to, if they were the third set?
I didn't say it could not live. See, you're putting words in my mouth. What I said is, there's thirty-six building permits.
Okay. All right.
Can I just ask one quick question? I'll let you. Tim, how many doctors you know build their own houses? They come to build this.
Anyway, I'm an engineer, and I prefer building myself.
Well, you're an engineer. You're not a doctor.
Sheila, in Rutland, we're in Selecting. We've had some people come up that have done some homework, but unfortunately, you know, I think some of the data is being maybe purposefully misread. I do want to make a clarification. I don't know if Ron really gave us enough credit. Just for everybody who's here, CMRPC, Central Mass Regional Planning, it's a state agency. They were founded in nineteen sixty-three. Their only purpose is to serve the forty communities in their area with planning and development. So to question the data, I think, means to turn around and see who's asking the questions and what the motivations are there. I would just put that out there. The town has spent over twelve years trying to catch up to rampant residential growth. Somebody brought up the benefits to increased density, and I would challenge anybody in this room, particularly anyone who's been following our annual town meetings for the past decade-plus, to provide me with real data on how we have had enough tax dollars to cover our expenditures in that time. We simply have not. There was a comment made that subdivision roads don't bother the town. They're maintained by the developer until a subdivision is finished. That has not been the practice in the town of Rutland. That's data that's easily verifiable. Just this past November, a number of roads were approved. The subdivision itself is not finished. The general practice is that our local companies regularly come to the town just before town meetings to get individual road approval. That's well before a subdivision is finished. That's one piece of it. The second piece of it is, we have over one hundred road miles here in the town of Rutland. In the subdivision, some of those roads are more complex, in many cases, because they do have greater infrastructure. They have water, they have sewer, and because of the topography of Rutland, they have pump stations. So we're looking at very defined and very complex road systems, all of which are eventually coming online and need to be maintained at multiple levels and under multiple scenarios: water, sewer, DPW, just regular road maintenance. The other thing that came up was student population, and I know I'm jumping around, but I was sort of taking notes as people were talking. Our student population saw dramatic rises, pretty much starting in the mid to late nineties. They actually leveled in two thousand and eight, not because of anything the town proactively did, but because the country hit a recession, because construction slowed down, not because of any proactive action that we took. Since two thousand and eight, our population for students has remained stable. We are at almost the same amount of students right now that we were back in oh-eight. Again, we have those numbers. However, when you ask about the CMRPC Phase One numbers that came out, and the study estimates five hundred students, we can tell you why. The thing you need to look at is the fact that there is a valid concern that is reflected in the difference between our aging housing population and the number of growing families who move into new construction. So when we have four hundred houses that are approved coming down the pipeline, the majority of those houses are going to be filled with growing families. These are four-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath, great room over the garage, maybe a three-car garage houses. They are not being built for empty nesters. They are being built for growing families. So the number that CMRPC gave us, which was a statistic, and as Ron noted, it was a statistic based on raw data, it's not reflecting what's happening in Rutland, which is growing families are moving in. And when those tax dollars come in, it's not enough to offset the costs of maintaining the services that those particular types of houses need. So our population overall has, of course, grown steadily since nineteen ninety. That came up. That really wasn't up for discussion. That really wasn't up for discussion. And but what did come up was with the 2021 build-out, based on whatever the number was, I think eighty permits a year, another thing that came out was there was incorrect assumption that all lots would be suddenly available for sale. In point of fact, right now, there is no town control over how or when lots are released. There is no control over how many building permits are requested. When we looked at our top level of years, we had a very high number of building permits being requested, with no limit, with no time for the town to take a breath and to absorb that level of growth. That's the concern. So focusing, and in regards to those number of permits, and I know a lot of people are focusing on the thirty-six, focusing on our last few years, that's not the appropriate thing to look at. Our picture is bigger than that. Focusing on just our highest years isn't the right thing to look at. Our picture is bigger than that. What we need to focus on are our straight financials and how much we've been able to afford. That's the bottom line, and it's every town's bottom line. We're not reinventing the wheel here. There are many, many communities with managed growth bylaws. They have them because they need to know that they can absorb and provide services to the new residents that are coming in. This is not to stop growth. This is to allow a community time to absorb that growth. I'm particularly concerned about a sort of willful misunderstanding on how the tax rate is assessed. It is complicated. The bottom line is, the higher a town's valuation, the more taxes a town can take in. Now, that's, and there are many things that factor into that. Just these past couple of years, we've seen very slight downticks in our tax rate. That sounds like a really good thing off the top. It means your valuations of your house are going up a little bit. Rutland is looking in a better position in that respect. However, it doesn't necessarily mean that your taxes are going to go down because your house is worth more. But the opposite is worse. If our housing valuations go down because we are unable to provide services because our infrastructure begins to crumble, the tax dollars that we can take in, they stay the same. Your valuation on your house, that goes down. The tax rate, it goes skyrocketing up. And it's what we've been seeing in the past ten years, up until recently. The other thing that we heard quickly about was the cherry sheet and Chapter Ninety. Chapter Ninety is the money we get from the state to maintain our roads. We're getting $350,000 this year to maintain our roads. It takes, does somebody know the number? We've heard it before from Gary often enough. Something like on the line of a quarter of a million dollars per mile to completely redo a road. We have a lot of roads here in town that are in rough shape. We have a lot of roads here in town that need full reclamation. We have dirt roads that need a full re-grading. We have projects that we're going to have to assign some of that Chapter Ninety money to. So when you hear that we have enough money to maintain our roads and our public ways, we just don't. Think of that, $350,000 for over a hundred road miles in the town of Rutland. You need to go to a town meeting. The fire department was brought up. This was, this is a tough one for me. My brothers are firefighters in other communities. This one's near and dear to my heart. We have not, in the twelve years that I have been doing this, and I was elected back in 2007, we have not had one budget year where we weren't looking seriously at closing the library, at shutting down the Council on Aging, at laying off every part-time police officer. We have had to ask the state for waivers because our library wasn't funded up. We've had to ask the state for waivers, waivers because we didn't have twenty-four-seven full-time paramedic coverage. It is only recently, and only because of a recession, that we have been able to catch up and get to the point where we are providing even adequate services. So to ask a question generally, has anybody talked to the fire chief? We have. The board certainly has. The FinCon certainly has. We've talked to every department head. We've had to tell them how much their budget is going to be cut, how many things they can't have, every single year because we simply don't have the tax dollars to do it. We have been operating at levy capacity for over thirteen years. That means, here's the coffee cup, we are right at the top. Very, I shouldn't say very few, but there are many other towns in this area that are not doing that. They see a budget, they look at it, they say, that's a fair budget. What should we do with the taxes? We've got room to play with this. Rutland does not. What Rutland has is a very full coffee cup and department heads who are asking for more and more and more. And in the absence of a permanent tax rate, we can't give them what they, they're telling us that they need. And these are good professionals. And they're doing more with less every single year. And that's because of rampant residential growth. My first-ever meeting that I sat in before I ever got elected, the town, and I think this happened every year, the town was sold of built goods, that new growth is always positive. And I can say with firsthand experience that it simply isn't. Not when it is very specifically residential, not when it's not being able to be offset with a diversified tax base, which we're working on, but we're not there yet. Yeah, we have one new restaurant in town and a new bakery, and that's great, where it's a step in the right direction. But our tax base is not diversified enough to absorb fifty-eight more houses in a given year. This is not about stopping growth. We all know that at some point Rutland will be fully built up, just like all the places in 128. But the towns in 128, their issues are different from ours. They're dealing with tear downs and rebuilds, tear downs and rebuilds. And they're working that into their planning process. Here, we're not there yet. We know we will be someday. We just need to ensure that we have the time and the tax dollars to be able to support our residents and keep them safe and keep them educated and keep going along with that process. The requests being made tonight are not unreasonable. And, you know, people will talk a lot about the thirty-six. My personal opinion, I thought thirty-six was a little bit high. Again, based on the numbers we've been seeing, I would have liked to have seen it at twenty-five. But that was up for discussion, and it's still up for discussion tonight. But the bottom line is, we need to do this for the good of the town long-term. We know this because we've seen it. Because had this passed back in 2002, 2003, we would have been in a different position for the past twelve years. One of these years, even if it's after me, I'm looking forward to see a town meeting come up where the Board of Selectmen and FinCon stand up and say, we had enough money for everything that the town needed. We haven't been able to do that in all the time that I've been doing this.
Yes.
Can I make just one comment about what Sheila said?
Would you please identify who you are?
Oh, sorry, Michelle Van Reet, Charnock Hill Road. So, do I need to go up? Is it okay if I just say it from here? It's quick. She made a comment that department heads are asking for more and more and more. And I'm going to say that she misspoke. Department heads are asking for some of what they've lost and been frozen over the years. The, a lot of, every, I think every department has been hit with cuts and freezes, cuts and freezes, for as long as I can remember coming to town meeting. So I think that's the only thing I would add, is that they're not asking for more and more, they're asking to be made whole from things that they've lost over the years. Sorry.
May I direct a question to Sheila? What does it cost to send a student to the schools?
You know, let me, if you want to move on, I'll pull up. We actually, we actually have, if you go on the town website under the Assessing Department, we have this, we have a former assessor.
I'm a still assessor.
There is a wonderful document that's up that explains exactly how much tax dollars go to each thing in the town. It breaks it out, and there's a pie chart. So I'll pull that up for you. Overall, the school district spends just about $12,000 per student right now to educate them. We, you know, and we're told a lot, and everybody sort of says, well, whatever, you know, economies of scale, that we are on the low end. And the fact of that is, the Wachusett District is on the low end when it comes to per capita student's budget across the state.
May I follow?
Yep.
So is what you're saying is if we have a house with one student in it, it costs $12,000 just to send them to school? Doesn't, we're not talking highway, police, fire, all the other general government that goes with it?
We're simplifying it, but yes, it costs $12,000 per capita. And we are charged within our budget. We make up about twenty-four percent of the Wachusett budget. That is based on population, so our numbers fluctuate very slightly up and down. This year Holden got hit hard. They saw an uptick in their student population. They're looking at an over seven percent increase. Our increase happens to be four percent this year. That came out to an increase of over half a million dollars in education spending. We are now up over nine million dollars in, excuse me, twelve million dollars in education spending.
Thank you. I know everybody knows who you are, but would you, just for the record, identify yourself?
Oh, Mike Sullivan, sorry, Crawford Road.
I have a question about this $12,000. Is that $12,000 straight out of our tax coffers? Or is that the cost?
No, absolutely not. So there's a foundation formula that comes into play, and it's what's being argued right now. Right now, as we know, the budget is at the House. There were amendments made by Representative Ferguson to try to make changes to the way transportation reimbursement happens. We were promised a hundred percent reimbursement. We've never gotten it. So our kids that get bust, we supplement that. It's a lot of money. And the other was change to the foundation formula and how they assess wealth. We've been hit hard with changes to the foundation formula in the past ten years. And one of the things they don't look at, and we've brought this up again and again, some of the reasons why Sterling and Holden in particular don't have as many problems funding education or because they do have a diversified tax base. And so some of their tax dollars are not also quitting, at the same time, students into the school population. We have very little of that. As we know, our residential tax base makes up the lion's share of everything.
I just wanted to make it clear that we aren't literally
No, I will.
giving $12,000 per student straight to Wachusett, straight out of our own treasury.
Not, not literally our treasury, but I suppose we all pay state taxes too, so at some point, yeah.
What was that number again? How much did we actually pay out of our budget?
I'm going to pull it up right now. It's on the Assessors' page on the town of Rutland website.
Yes.
Hi, Kevin Jarvie, Hillside Road. I just had a question about the term of the bylaw. And then, within that term, has there been any thoughts to changes within that first term? Say all of a sudden something happens in six months, and we've got something happening up at the Heights, or there's all of a sudden some big business three years from now, before this term comes up, is there a possibility of room within that to now say, we've got some big business in town now. Maybe now we've got some more room for some more houses. It's just a question. And then the other was, you know, I hear about the houses that everybody's, you know, three hundred thousand, three fifty, three sixty. What if you have a thirty-acre parcel, and instead of putting in twelve houses, you put in six, and they're $700,000 apiece? Would that be considered one of the thirty-sixes of development? But we also, wouldn't it be great to have $700,000 houses in town? I don't know if they're marketable. You guys could tell us if you could sell them or not. But has that been a consideration where the $350,000 market or below, or whatever that number was, it hurts the town? But then there's a number that helps the town. So if we're helping the town in any way to gain tax revenue, has that been looked at where maybe some houses would be allowed to be built that were above, maybe substantially above that line? So it actually brings more revenue into the town? Just a question.
And anyone give an answer to that? I don't recall there being much of any kind of discussion.
As far as the number could be changed by town meeting?
Yes, the sunset clause is just, we came up with, there was a range between five years, seven years, and ten years. We thought that within five years, the minimum, it could be studied and looked at, because five years, five years for me went by real fast with my kids. So figured five years is a good point to where it'll come up again with town meeting, then it could be accepted or denied, however it goes by with this town meeting. And with any yearly town meeting, a motion could be brought up on the floor to take it on anyways. So it's not completely set in stone.
Okay, this is a little bit, little bit, maybe, out of line. But since this term of the bylaw has been brought up. First, I just want to, I do want to mention that until this goes on the warrant, basically, this thing is still open for possible changes. Okay? And I am sure all the members of the planning board have been thinking a lot about this. I know certainly I have. And for any of you that do have a printed copy of this thing, if you do go to that Section Eight of the bylaw, where it says term of the bylaw, I am going to simply open it as a suggestion, and if someone would now even like to comment on it. Making in addition to that, after the first sentence that says this bylaw shall be effective through May 11th, 2024, the second sentence starts the bylaw. I would start that sentence with, following a report by the town administrator regarding the effectiveness and physical and fiscal impact to the town, the bylaw then may be extended. My only thoughts on this whole thing were, yes, it's possible to extend the term of the bylaw, but why would you extend the bylaw without evaluating what that bylaw did for you? So I'll, I'm going to open it just to that particular point. Does anybody have any comments or questions on that particular issue?
I have a structural question. You have an app, because that's kind of what you're referring to. As far as the planning board recommending this, if the planning board doesn't recommend this, does it not go on the warrant?
We only make a recommendation. This will be on the warrant, in some form. It will be on the warrant.
Sorry about that. That's, I suppose.
Weeston.
I apologize, if I may, through the chair. Just to clarify my previous points, people are asking questions. If they go on the Assessors' pages of the town of Rutland website, there is a Rutland tax brochure for FY 2019, and it shows the breakdown of how your tax dollars are spent. We spend about fifty-seven percent on education. This past year, FY 2019, which is about to end, we spent $12,257,000. Had we used the calculation of about $12,000 per student, that number should be about nineteen million. And then, just to clarify Mr. Bittler's question, the Board of Selectmen voted last night at our meeting to place the article on town meeting warrant officially. It is Article Three.
Thank you.[1564.51]
I'd like, would you come up with an arm?
Okay, that's, by the way, we will not, while this is subject to some change, and we're certainly open to any thoughts that anybody has out here, we will not make any, we will not officially make changes to this, within this public hearing. Our policy on public hearings is, we take the public input, and then, once the public hearing is closed, we do our deliberations on that input and make decisions as to whether there will be, won't be changes, or whatever.
Nice question. Again, Mitch or Reynolds, I was just wondering if, if as part of, either part of the study, I didn't see, but if median income, average median income for folks moving in was looked at, and the average age of folks that were pulling permits in the last several years?
I don't believe so. I don't recall hearing anything.
But you can ask that, Ken, as an EEO, you can't ask for age. I don't know, I don't think you can ask for age on EEOs.
We did ask for information on permits, but there wasn't any information on, that they provided to me on ages of individuals.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Two minutes?
Three, four.
Jeff Stillings, Board of Selectmen, I just had a couple of notes based on some of the speakers that we've heard already. First, so today it was brought to my attention, there is, there is some data about the numbers of students and a projection, and it's by NESDEC, New England School Development Council, www.nesdec.org, that does do a K through 12 Rutland mass projected enrollment. Current enrollment, 1,607 students, and it does show the gradual increase, a 10-year increase up to 1,662. That's based on the status quo. That's not made, that's, that's that entity in there. In addition, the Board of Selectmen, we serve as the executive body for the town, and with that, we have a very, very large responsibility to make decisions, as the planning board does, based on what is always in the best interest of the town. We're townspeople too. This room is full of townspeople. We come from different wats of life, but not all of us are experts in the area of building and growth density. So as managers, if you will, in our position, we have to rely upon subject matter experts, experts in the subject matter in the different arenas that we're talking about. So as a member of the steering committee, and now the chair of the steering committee, there are two guiding principles that we drew upon, well, part of the guiding principles that we drew upon in reaching some of these conclusions that I'd like to share with you. And these are from true subject matter experts, both of them state entities. The first one is the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. Phase one talks about the fiscal impact analysis. The Town of Rutland has estimated that several hundred subdivisions and A and R lots are already permitted and waiting to be developed with three-to-four bedroom homes, and developers are continuing to press the planning board for more approvals. Land is being taken out of Chapter 61A at an alarming rate to make room for more residential development. The town simply lacks sufficient planning, financial, and staff resources to address this growth. One of the guiding principles, CMRPC Phase One. The second one, which we drew upon, is an MDC study. It's a study by, that's put out to municipalities, Metropolitan District Commission, specifically regarding growth management tools. And it states that the adoption of a local comprehensive plan and open space plans are vital steps in any long-term strategy to cope with these challenges. Even the best plans, however, are only effective if they are implemented through local bylaws, regulations, and policies that manage growth and allow communities to shape their futures. Contrary to common misconception, growth management does not accomplish or attempt to accomplish the end result of stopping growth, rather, it influences the amount, rate, location, environmental effects, and character of new growth.
Okay, just hold on one second. Yeah, anyone else who would like to speak? Do I see another hand back there? Yeah.
Marlin Weimeth, 7 Briarwood Road. A question was asked when Sheila was up here, and I'm not sure if it was answered, so Sheila, maybe you can help me. The amount that we pay from Rutland per pupil in the Wachusett district, do you have that number?
It's about 12,000 per student cost, but the number I gave you is our total number, and we can break that out.
So, right, so it's like 12 million.
12,257,000.
1,600 students. So then the Town of Rutland pays about 7,600 per student?
Sounds about right.
Okay, so if the houses being built are likely going to house students in them, young families moving in, the taxes that those families give the town are not going to cover the cost to educate the new students.
George, you see, was in Dale Road, they talked about it's not gonna cover the cost on single-family homes, but how about things like the storage units we build, which don't bring any students into the school? How about things like the, let me finish. About things like the condos, we bring in 18 condos, there's three or four students out of the whole thing. You don't maintain the roads because they're private roads. That also gives surplus funds, and that's building permits. The condos are building permits, like the one that we want to do on 211 Main Street. You're not gonna maintain that road, there's gonna be very few students there, if any. They're two-bedroom, we mostly have single women or retired people in the whole thing. You're limiting those permits just like a regular single-family home. And those are surplus monies to the town. Not a negative amount of money, a surplus amount of money to the town. Thank you. So those should not be eliminated. These should not count as permits.
Yes. Yeah, way in the way in the Mac.
Again, I just wanted to, I think we're conflating some issues, and for purpose of productive conversation, I mean, I definitely hear the concerns having, or working currently for the Department of Higher Education, the cost of education and schooling. But I think that's, that's gonna be a problem that we need to deal with regardless of growth. I mean, schooling costs have outpaced inflation and wage growth for decades. I mean, inflation over the last three decades is a little over 2%, and now we're being asked for Sheila, is it, is it 4% this year for a school contribution? And that's going to be a problem regardless. And to clarify a point earlier, I mean, we can't ask for demographic information when you do surveys about who's coming in, or, or even surveys of current residents in town. I only mention that because the average age of a home purchaser, according to the census in 2017, which is the most recently released data I could find, was 44 years old. And I'm just thinking that would maybe delineate that folks have older students that are already at the tail end of their schooling. I'm not sure, but my only concern is that the economic data wasn't, wasn't looked at as insofar as, as some of these numbers are concerned, and that's, that's where I'm coming from on this. I'm just concerned as a small business owner, how this could impact small business growth in the town. I got really excited when we talked about Rutland Heights and some of the plans that are going out there, and I just want to make sure that we put our best foot forward in trying to capture some of that Worcester growth as much as we can. Thank you.
Actually, just to kind of touch on that, Chris Phelps, Ternacle Road, is there any study or any information on the rates of turnover, ultimately people who their kids have gone, been out of school or out of school, they sell their house, new family moves in that's raising multiple kids, as far as, you know, obviously that'll directly affect the numbers of the 36 new houses or the 60 new houses, whatever it is, for the school system. If there was a large portion that was developed for the town all within a certain range of years, and now those houses are all being turned over at a higher rate this year versus last year, a lower rate next year, I don't know if any of that has been, is available.
I don't think that was any part of this study, turnover rate of houses.
No, that wasn't something that we looked at. I personally have not seen a study like that. That doesn't necessarily mean that it doesn't exist, but that wasn't something that we.
The board of realtors would be able to provide information on that.
Sorry, like I said, I think that would directly affect this whole thing.
Hi, Matt LeBourne, 28 Bradley Drive. I'm also a team member of the Wachusett Regional School District School Committee, and I'm not here to speak on behalf of the school committee, but I do wanted to share some information and some numbers that I think will make sense. So our numbers in Rutland, it's been stated that we're growing, we're flat, we're decreasing in size. Actually, between the last two years, we've decreased in size of kids going to Wachusett District, down from 1,647 to 1,612 students. So the numbers, even though we're seeing residential growth, we're actually seeing fewer kids going to the schools. And that's, the projections are, we're projecting to see more kids from Rutland as, as growth continues and families continue to develop. But as a regional district, we're seeing three out of five of our towns actually decreasing in size. So where we have the biggest challenge with space limitations is actually at the high school. It's not in Rutland schools. We actually have a full pod in Glenwood Elementary School. It was designed for four grades, and we only host three grades there. So we have plenty of space in the schools in this town. It's the high school that's actually having the challenges with class sizes. The other thing that I do want to point out, the piece of the total budget. So our budget for Rutland, or what is being asked of Rutland, is $12,542,000. So it's an increase of under 4% from the previous year. That is not $12,000 per student times by the total number of students. That's less federal aid, less the contribution from other towns. As a town, we make up roughly 23% or so of the local contributions from the other five towns in the district. So we're actually in a place that financially, should full-day kindergarten actually pass, it will help us from a tax levy perspective in the following years. So it will help us as a town. The, the challenge, I think somebody just mentioned it, the cost of education is increasing faster than the cost of upliving right now. And it's just, it's something that across the country, across the state, we're facing, and we have to be creative as a town. And my biggest concern in hearing everything tonight is, my concern is, I don't own a business, but if I were owning a business, I would want to put my business where I would see growth opportunity and where I would see people wanting to go. And I think when you cap something, inevitably it gives the perception that that town does not want to grow. People do want to move here because it's a safe community, it has a really good school system, and they really want to stay local with, with things. So I just, I hope everyone kind of takes that into perspective, because I think everybody wants to get to the same place, but you're hearing a lot of concern over limiting the growth that's going to limit growth down the road. And I would just say, let's plan for that growth down the road rather than limit it, try to manage it now.
Thank you.
Through the chair, I got a question, and the numbers for the school, they said they're decreasing. Does that, does that include, and this is a question I have, school choice, where students aren't going to the Wachusett system, but we still have to pay, say they go to, I don't know, Bay Path or something like that? Does those numbers that you have include that, that school choice? Because that 11, 12,000 still has to be paid out.
So I think you're asking two things. One is, Bay Path is an option for people that want a separate school besides going to the educational school. And that actually costs the town a lot more per student than somebody going to a school within the Wachusett district, because a Bay Path has to have education time and shop time, so you're almost paying for two teachers for every one student. School choice is the ability for a student to elect to go to school outside of this district. School choice is something that we'll probably see fewer kids leave if full-day kindergarten stays in this district, because right now, we actually lose money with kids going out where we'd actually gain money. So it might cost us $5,000 for a kid going out, where if we kept a kid here, we keep 7,000 in the district. So to answer your question, this accounts for the school choice kids. We've got roughly 100 kids right now that are coming into the school from school choice, and we've got about 200 or so overall throughout the district, not just Rutland, that decide to go to schools outside of the district.
But that school choice has been shut down, correct?
School, we don't allow kids to come into the, into the district, but anybody in the Commonwealth could have their kid go to a school that allows for school choice.
Thanks.
Through the chair, Harry Segman, 13 Beachwood. I just have a question for this gentleman. We talked about Bay Path, and we talked about the decrease in the number of students going to Wachusett. Do we know how many of those students, that was a decrease, that actually decided to go to Bay Path? Do we know out of that decrease in number?
Or do they not exist?
It's not a question of, you know, we're having less population. It could be a question.
So it's, it's a good question. We don't know that exact number. What I can tell you is, and Sheila, you might be able to tell, to tell us the exact answers. Years ago, Harry?
Yeah.
We had open spots at Bay Path that were not taken. Now, we have more demand in Rutland for kids wanting to go to Bay Path, and whether that be because they feel that the high school is, is too crowded, or there's a better education opportunity, we're saying that. But we still lose kids out of district to, you know, private high schools, school choice in that matter. We are seeing an increase in population for sure, but we haven't seen an increase that's impacting our local schools where they're over capacity. We need more teachers for sure. We have high, big class sizes, but we don't have capacity issues.
Appreciate that, no problem.
There's capacity issues at the high school, though.
That, that's.
You're not able to offer programs at the high school, so people are opting to go to private, and that costs money as well.
Right, right. And I think I said that, that as Rutland's concerned, we don't have the capacity, but the high school absolutely there are capacity issues and program issues to not be able to accommodate that.
Very good program issues.
Do you want the, do you want the answer? So the proposed Bay Path budget for the coming year, FY 2019, the budget for Bay Path was $447,732. The proposed budget for FY 2020, we saw a significant increase this year, it's at 549 916. That's an increase of just over $102,000. To Matt's point, Bay Path, when we talk about per capita student spending, we never break that out. It costs less to educate elementary students than it does to educate middle school students than it does to educate high school students than it does to educate technical high school students. So we recognize that on a per capita basis, that it costs more to send a student to Bay Path. We've actually never hit our quota of seats at Bay Path, but we're getting closer. We've had more students this past year apply. We do still have a few empty, empty seats for Rutland available, but less than we've ever had in the past since we've joined Bay Path's community of 10 different towns.
Just a couple of questions. Jeff, you read something that you, you said that you based the managed growth bylaw on?
No.
How did you, what did, how did you put that? Just, that's a question I have.
It's one of the guiding principles.
Guiding principles, saying that there were 400 lots that were available to build on? Is that how, is that what I heard? Because it says that in the, in the Phase One study. So I'm trying to figure out where they are, because I, I mean, I don't have them, and I don't know who else does, but I, I tried to make this point earlier, and I make it again. CMRPC studies, through Ron's own admission, needed to have a second phase to it. You're basing a lot of this on the first phase, and I just think it's premature, really premature. It may, it may be right, wrong, or indifferent down the road, but today, I don't think we have the right numbers. Based upon what I'm hearing and what I'm reading, you're basing your study upon numbers that don't really work. We've had, over the last three years, we've had 51, 53, and 56 permits issued for new homes. And according to Matt, they, we've decreased the amount of students coming into the, into the system. So putting, capping it at 36, how, how does that help? And the CMRPC study itself, if you want to rely on a number in it, says 0.5 students per household. And that's, and that's how they come up with it. So Sheila mentioned that she came on in 2007? Sheila, 2006, 2007? So that was probably the worst year we saw in housing in, forever. And up until then, it really, you said after that, there was problems for the last 10 years, but they just started to get better. Is that what you said? I think I said that correctly. So for the last, for the 10 years after 2007, eight of those were probably some of the worst years we've seen in the building business that I've been in, since I've been in it. And you said it only started to get better over the last couple of years. Well, that's because the economy controlled, as it was said at the last time that they tried to put one of these in, the economy will control this, and it always does. You have peaks, you have valleys, but it averages out. They wanted 56 permits in 2003, it averaged to 61. So I say that. I did speak to the fire chief. I can tell by your comments, you didn't. I talked to fine com, I can tell by your comments, you didn't. So I suggest that, please, please, speak to them.
Anyone else?
I'm Angela Swayze. I just would like to speak as.
I'm, I'm sorry, can you tell?
Angela Swayze, 42 Glenwood Road. I would like to speak as a resident of Rutland for almost the last decade. I have six children. My husband is a doctor, I'm a nurse. We chose Rutland for a reason. The people that we've spoken to in this town built their backs on Rutland, okay? Killed themselves for this town. A lot of us can't speak numbers, we can't gibberish, you know, just what Jeff said. We, we're not, we're not the experts on, but we see, we see what has been going on. Six children, okay? I have one more, one more to get through. Maybe the kids, have you gone through the cul-de-sacs and see how many kids are going to be in already the schools? Have you driven through all the developments and all the little kids running around that haven't gone into the schools yet? I'm scared. I could barely, I have my last child graduating as senior this year. My last one. In the school system, what's, what are the school systems going to be like? And forget the school system, we're focusing on the school systems. What about the calls that come in, and we can't cover them? What about all the other services that we're, we need to provide to the people? I'm not against growth, I'm not against growth, and we all need to grow. We need to slow down a little bit. And that's all I have to say. I'm just, I don't have all the numbers, but I'm here as a resident of this town concerned.
Anyone else?
I'm just hoping to give one last clarification to everybody in this room. The reason to bring this forward is the, is for holistic reasons. It's not just the CMRPC study, it's not just the past couple of years. What it is, is looking at the town as a whole, across multiple platforms, across all of our public services, across our debt. I think one of the things that just got brought up was, well, how come we're leveling off just now? It's because we are finally seeing some of our debt.
Because we are finally seeing some of our debt come off the books. The reason we have debt was because we grew so fast. And when we grow so fast, we need new things. Central Tree Middle School is twenty years old today. It already needs a new roof. It needs significant infrastructure work. Glenwood is, I believe, thirteen years old this year. The library you're in is under a forty-year loan that's under the levy. These were all a result of rapid growth. We have to respond to that. And so to rely purely on economics and to rely on the national state of debt, the national state of the economy, is an irresponsible way for a municipality to proceed. Because we've seen, and again, from a holistic perspective, our data, not just the CMRPC data, but our hard data, which is our budgets every single year, is showing exactly where our deficiencies have been and exactly where they came from. And so to bring this up, and I do recognize the concerns of, well, wait a minute, if we, if we slow down the growth of a town too fast, are we driving certain things away that are beneficial? Again, this is not meant to stop growth, and it's not meant to put our heads in the sand like an ostrich and say Rutland will never be built out. Of course, we will be built out. But we need to do it at a reasonable pace so that we can maintain the level of services that this town needs. If we don't do that, not only will we see our residents in various states of inability to get appropriate services, including public safety, including education, the worst-case scenario on that is it's a town that then is failing. And a town that is failing does not see its property values rise. So to be responsible, we're going to manage our growth. Again, not stop it, manage it, be able to absorb it, and move forward.
Again, Mike Sullivan, Crawford Road. Um, I have a couple of specific questions about the bylaw and the way it's written in it. And please don't, don't get me wrong. I'm not criticizing. I'm just asking you to think about what I'm going to bring up and make sure that you've thought of all the ramifications of it. So if, if you can pull your copies out on the section four, issuance of building permits. The middle of it said, "Building permits based on application that the building commissioner deems complete shall be issued on a first-in-time basis, Thomas, subject to sections B and C below." And B and C are pretty self-explanatory. I guess I think about this, and I can envision first of the month, the, however many builders we have in town, two, three, six, whatever it is, they're going to be lined up out there, you know, three o'clock in the morning to be first in line. No, you laugh, but, but I truly believe that's what's going to happen. And I, I think that's going to be, A, unfair to the building commissioner, but I think potentially unfair to the builders. Because you, you know, one builder is going to get his three for- Probably not going to happen in our town because we don't have that many people asking for building permits. But it's conceivable that if the people come in and get in line and get their three, get their three, get their three, and they're used up, the other guy in line isn't going to be able to get his. So I'm suggesting that perhaps rather than on a first-in basis, that you do it on an alternating basis. So if I'm first in line, I get my permit. You're second in line, you get a permit. You're third in line, you get yours. And you're fourth, you get yours. And then if nobody else is in line and you haven't given your allotment for the month, back to me. I get another one. He gets another one. He gets another one. She gets another one. So I'm kind of on a rotating basis. Does that make any sense? I guess not, because-
No, I just-
Thinking about it.
Yeah, that's insane. I'm not too fast. I'm not too fast.
Could we, could we maybe ask Dave? There was language in the two thousand and three bylaw that addressed that. Is it possible to reinsert it? It was extremely well-written. And I think it got removed for brevity.
For twenty, oh, two attempts?
Right, and it, it speaks to what Mike is asking for, which is how do you make the playing field fair, I guess? Is that fair?
Well, yeah. I mean, and, and, you know, feel that, I don't have a dog in this place. It doesn't make a difference to me. But I, I just see where this is potentially unfair to the, to the individual builders. So I'm wondering whether rotating slash alternating is a better way of doing it.
I think I've digested what you said, and I, I would have to kind of agree.
Yeah.
Okay, well, again, I'm not asking you for an answer now. Just think about it as you finalize.
Yeah, yeah.
So I was rotating on the people that are applying for it. So once they've met their quota, they can come-
The first guy in line gets one, the second one gets one, the third gets one, the fourth gets one. And if that's all there is, and the first guy wants another one, he now gets another one. But he doesn't get his maximum number for the month before-
Because he's first in line.
Correct. Because otherwise, you're going to have people pitch in tents. You know, it's going to be like opening day of the Red Sox in Kenmore Square. So I, I think you understand my point. Just, just think about it. And then C, um, the last part of the last sentence, one or more of the same principles within a single year. So I think I know what you're saying there, that an applicant can't have, he can't come up for his three, and then his brother come up and get three, and whatever. Might this be better stated to say in a subdivision? Rather than, rather than, you know, the principles, you can get however many permits that you can get in a subdivision? That way, because the other problem I see is the, the building inspector is not going to be sitting there saying, all right, is he, is he a principal or is he not? And how's he going to judge that? And how, you know, I mean, if, if you said to me, hey, you've got Crawford Hill Estates up there, and it's a subdivision, and I come in and I ask for however many permits I can get my three, well, then I get my three. And if, you know, I send my son up and ask him to get three on the same subdivision, you're going to say, no, you already got your three. To me, it, it would make it cleaner for both the applicants and certainly for the building inspector. I, I just see it as asking for the building inspector sitting there saying, are these folks, you know, principals or not? In item five B, it kind of tags on what Mr. Lucier said, but perhaps a little different. There are only units that are age, basically over fifty-five housing. I'm not sure why we necessarily want those counted as part of the, as part of the total number. I mean, if they're senior housing, they're, they're surely not taxing the system. They're contributing to the system. You're not, you know, you don't have roads to take care of. You, you don't have kids in school. All of those things that are associated, you know, general, general government, police, fire, sure, you have those things. But you don't have the big dollar, right? And so, I don't know, it's just a little troubling to me that the over fifty-five is included in that number.
Isn't the exemption?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, but it's an exemption.
It's exemption. It's not a-
It's not-
It's not for thirty- But up to ten are counted a year. What, what if, you know, someone comes in and says, hey, I, I want to build thirty senior housing units? And they're all going to be over fifty-five? And it's, you know, wherever it's going to be.
Well, yeah, Mr. Lucier, I don't know. Are, are yours senior?
No, mine are not.
Yeah, but let's just assume those are senior. You know, they're down, nobody even, nobody even, other than me probably knows they're them because I drive by them all the time. But they don't, if they're over fifty-five, they don't tax the system in any way. So again, I'm not looking for an answer. I'm just asking you to think about it. And can someone explain to me? And I guess I'm kind of dense. And item six, special permit, item E. Can you just explain what that means to me? I mean, I've read that ten times, and I, I just don't get it.
So E is one of the criteria to be used to possibly grant a special permit, right?
Yeah, uh, yes. But, but the, the density aspect of, are you saying there that if, if you bring a project in that has greater density than normal, you, you would be granted?
It's a, it says a reduction in density.
Right.
So reduction in density would mean that while it's a larger-
Okay. I, I set it backwards, but you know what I meant. So it, but it says particular considerations shall be given. What, what does that mean? You're, you're going to kind of look more favorably upon reduction in density?
I think that means, if I may, through the chair, residential housing that have, like, estate lots. It's a bigger piece of land for one person. So instead of having five houses come in on a person's-
Ten acres.
Ten acres. It's only one house has come in.
Okay, so if, if I come in with a, with a, and I ask for a special permit, and my density is going to be twenty-five percent or more, based on what it says here, do I get more building permits?
No. If you, if you, if we've already met our quota for the year, and you come in and say, look, I, I want to build a house, and we've already issued the thirty-six, correct me if I'm wrong, we may consider your, to allow you to have your building permit because you're building one house on a bigger piece of land. You're not really increasing the population of the town by taking that land and putting five houses on it. You just want to put one. So you not only are you conserving land because it's, it, you're making that ten acres into, only, only be allowed to be built one.
I got you. I just don't see the part that it says one house.
Well, it's a, I, I think it kind of does because you're decreasing the density. So if, if you're able to put ten houses on there-
Per. Maybe it should say per house.
Per house?
Per house lot.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's maybe what we're wanting. We're not reading it correctly. I can, I can, I don't, I'm not a law expert. But, um, yeah, I think the idea behind it-
Neither am I. All I'm saying is, when I read that, I, I say to myself, okay, if I come in with a, a density of, of lesser than twenty-five percent, then you're going to give me more permits. And I'm not sure that's what you're really saying, but that might, or you mean to say. But I think, and, and how many more? You know, I, I, I just-
Steve's clarifying.
Yeah, I don't think it-
Yeah, I, I, Mike, I assume you're saying these clarification.
All right, and then the last question, I promise. Item seven. Where the residential rate of admission would cause a particular lot to lose rights vested in mass general law forty-eight, section six, protections granted there and shall be extended until a building permit is granted. Under what conditions can you lose the rights of a lot? And again, I'm sure it's, it's a law that I just don't know, but it doesn't- I, I don't understand what you're saying.
Does zoning protection change the zoning protection?
Yes, it's a change in zoning protection. Basically, what this bylaw would not do is, is remove the zoning protections for a given lot. I don't know of an exact example to this point. It's, it's protective language for some-
But none of this bylaw would, would change the existing zoning of any lot, the way I read it. I mean, you're only talking about numbers. You're not talking about the zoning of the lot.
Okay, this is, if, if someone has a conforming lot.
Yeah.
Okay, sixty thousand square feet in the R sixty zone. We decide, okay, we're going to revise our zoning by law. Now, the minimum lot size is eighty thousand square feet. Okay? If they have that lot, and it was a conforming lot, it's sixty thousand square feet, but they don't apply for the building permit until the new zoning in eighty thousand square feet comes in and affect their grandfather, would be the, would be the result of.
Okay.
They will be allowed to build on sixty thousand.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Maybe something like that language should be written in there?
Maybe should be.
Make it easier to understand?
Maybe should be.
Okay.
Can you answer a question that was asked? So Jeff Stillings, the steering committee. So in response to section five on the exemptions for fifty-five and older housing and the cap of ten per year, I had to go back to the minutes because I didn't have an exact recollection that that was any intent of the steering committee. But the question was asked, how did that number derive? And I just want to say that I believe the speaker was, he had a good point. He had a good point about having a cap at all for fifty-five and older housing. Personally speaking, as an individual, not a member of the board, and steering committee, I'm all in favor of the fifty-five and older housing for that very reason that, that you just said. So going back to the minutes of the steering committee, the multi-unit entity in there, they base this upon, because the skeleton, if you will, of what the bylaw to be presented was, was derived from the two thousand and two product, seventeen years ago, when this was brought forth last for the town. That product stated twenty special permits per year for fifty-five and older. And that was based upon a total cap of sixty. And during one of the meetings, the joint meeting, we had motioned for a cap of thirty, so thus fifty percent less. And that's where the ten came from. So I just wanted to clarify, that's where it came from. But I do agree that that is a very good point, whether that is necessary at all. Also, going back to one of the previous questions on the wording of caps on individual applicants, on the rotation, on how you could rotate fairly in there. Maybe we could defer back to the other, the two thousand and two product, section five point five, which I'll present. Does have the language in there that addressed that if the permits exceed the cap, they'll be issued on a prorated basis to each request with a number of permits issued based on an equal percentage of the applicant's outstanding requests. So I think the two thousand and two language kind of addressed the concerns that Mr. Sullivan had in there. So, and that is the Rutland language. So I just present that back for the board's consideration, okay? Thank you, sir.
Don't worry, we got one in the back.
Yes?
Michael Bo Trubus, seventy-sixth and Hamlet Street. Under exemptions, section five, part C, there's an item about single approval not required under the Subdivision Control Act, lots granting. Essentially, lots which are under common ownership or common control would go over the exception of that lot, if you have more than two. If that's the case, do those other lots for that particular year become non-buildable? And how would that affect the tax rate of those particular lots? Do they become devalued and therefore can go for an abatement? And would that affect the financial status of the town? Something's my-
Do not know about tax status. Looking to, looking to the gentleman in the back in his shirt.
The assessor?
Yeah. I don't know how to answer that.
Well, I don't know.
I didn't understand the full question, too.
So essentially, if you have five lots sitting next to each other that are owned right now, you're paying taxes on potentially five lots at a higher tax rate than if it was one lot or if it were just considered back then. But if that lot becomes effectively unbuildable because of this rule, how would that affect that?
Well, the lots are valued at the stage of completion. There are different values of different lots. If it's a lot that doesn't have a road there, it doesn't have a-
We're talking, well, in this case, I think we're talking A and R.
A and R.
Or even a completed, or even a completed road.
Yeah, A and R's got to be on a road.
An existing road.
Existing road.
It stacks on its potential.
Yeah, if it was unbuildable and there was nothing there, it would be at a lower rate.
No, I'm saying- No, I'm saying.
Well, he's saying if it's unbuildable, because the town won't issue the permits.
I can build it this year. I might not be able to build it next year, if I'm not in the right.
So, you go for abatement?
So, you can go for an abatement?
That's what I'm saying. We have different, there are different rules. I don't have all the stuff in front of us, Jeff and I, but there are different rates that are, and we went through this with Mr. Blair this year, too, where he had different.
Ten percent, twenty-five percent.
Ten percent, twenty-five percent, with full buildable lots with, you know, we would have to have a conversation within the Board of Assessors on how those would come up moving forward. I think it's a good point that the board needs to think about next year, the year after, if all these lots are deemed unbuildable that year, then.
Great question. Can I ask that question? Do I have about two hundred and fifty of those? And I can only get nine permits a year, based on your thing, so out of the two hundred and fifty, nine would be at full value, and the other would be zero value. I like that. At least, at least I get something out of it. I'd pay no taxes on those lots. Perfect. They're not worth shit.
Well, it'd be a value. You know what I mean? It'd be a value.
If I can't sell it, how can I have value?
Okay, okay, okay.
You're right, though, but we had that conversation.
Uh, folks!
It's still a value.
If you're gonna speak, you want to be recognized by the chair. Yes?
Has anyone looked at, is this gonna impact property values at all in town? Or particularly in the subdivisions? If they're only offering a few permits a year, folks wanna live there, is that gonna impact prices for anyone's home values?
May I? Okay.
Yeah, that's awesome. I just didn't know if anyone, I know that we have a couple realtors in the room, so I know that would be something that was looked at.
Well, let's talk about looking at things. We know, if I may. We know that a lot of small towns in Massachusetts are creating this type of bylaw. A lot of this language was taken from those towns that have been passed by the AG to allow it. Right, and personally, I don't, I don't know, and I don't know if the studies have been made on them, that these bylaws work. Personally, as a citizen of this town and as a member of many boards, I'm conflicted with this bylaw, 'cause it does limit the right of people to build, which I feel people do have a right to build, as long as they do it responsibly. It limits what people can do with their properties that they are paying taxes on. So, if we're not gonna allow someone to build on that property, do we still tax them? I don't know if that's fair. One of the reasons why we set this at five years, so hopefully that we can find some type of backing. Right now, I don't think anybody on the board, please speak up, know if this bylaw's gonna work. Like I said, a lot of towns in the state have already made one, because the state is growing, and it is a small state, so population-wise, it's growing. We know that more money is going out than money that is coming in. That is one of the main reasons, I think, that we created this law. If it doesn't work, we have to wait and find out. That's all I'm gonna say.
Mr. Ferris?
I just have a follow-up question, too. And both my neighbors are contractors. Great neighbors, nonetheless. But, that aside, my question, too, is, is this going to create layoffs for local workers that do the jobs, that are the nitty-gritty, that work for, I guess, some of these folks over here?
That's a very good question as well. Distinct possibility.
If we know that, if, for, some folks are of the opinion that we don't know if this is gonna work, are we risking people's jobs over something that we don't know, if the studies proven haven't had an effect in small towns around Massachusetts? It's just.
Get the builders there, maybe we could ask them a question. How many of you employ local people?
Will they move them on?
Well, how many, how many that employ local people? I mean, we've got a whole bunch of people in the room that employ folks, so I mean, it's, maybe that's a good question to ask exactly.
Will you employ local people?
Okay.
Anyone else?
Motion to close the hearing.
Second.
I wanna give everybody one more chance. Anyone else? I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that one? In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much, all for coming.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more comment. Please have your meetings on the TV, so that people can see what this is all about.
Oh, every meeting board meeting?
Absolutely. It's being pushed for. Absolutely.
And we just say, please, we do have other business we have to attend to, so if you aren't gonna socialize, please.
Outside the door.
Outside the door.
You're here for that meeting, I would say. That was Ireland.
Ireland's awesome.
That's on, that's on my bucket list. On my bucket list. There's the site sheet underneath it. I know we don't have it admin yet, but.
That goes to Dave.
I like Mr. Gibbs' philosophy. It's called supply and demand. Actually, your house is gonna be worth more if there's less houses.
Yeah, that's a good point.
All right, so, agenda.
I think if Mr. Trump doesn't get elected, we'll go right into recession, so it really won't matter.
The minutes?
Okay.
I do got one question before we get started.
Turkey Hill was continued.
All right, maybe this is for Maryland. Are we going to all these comments on when's the next meeting that?
Well, we're gonna have to talk about that.
Okay.
It's tomorrow night and Thursday night.
Oh, wait a minute, I can't be discussing. No, yeah, we're gonna have to. I mean, there's some great suggestions, but we're on a shortlist. How do we get these in place?
Yeah.
Sorry, Maryland.
Let me get this chair.
Are you, are you gonna do the minutes, or are you gonna hold them off?
I'll write that to the board, if you don't mind.
Don't take this personal, man. I think you did a really good job, with limited, with limited resources, limited money. Yeah. I know how, I know how doing with less more is.
Yeah, I think we should handle what's on the agenda.
You didn't go, the key thing is, right, you didn't go into it with an agenda, you went into it neutral. All right, thanks, Norm. All right, minutes next. I gotta get to those.
Okay, minutes.
I got the agenda. Is it just the April ninth? Is that the only minutes we gotta go through?
I think so.
Okay.
Permit a couple minutes.
It's all the regulars now.
Yeah.
You guys can't support that. That's crazy.
We're gonna zero. We're gonna, we're gonna go to zero.
I wanted to go to like four building permits a year, but they wouldn't let me do it.
Yeah.
Negative ten.
No, we're just gonna, we're gonna abdicate to hold and let them take us over. No, four is ridiculous.
Interesting, and definitely not as bad as I was afraid it might be.
Yeah, I thought this was gonna be a free-for-all, Norm. Actually, I really did.
I felt a lot safer up here.
Yeah, I suppose that's, you know, solid.
I can still take a three oh eight if it needs to.
Okay, minutes, April ninth.
Page receiving full, we're good.
Here we go.
Good.
Let's take a look.
I got that one, that's good.
We have not gotten anything back on Turkey Hill yet, right?
Yeah, if you like, I can talk about that. We have not gotten anything back from Turkey Hill. We haven't got an answer back. I've got a response from the town council, where they'd like to set up a call for tomorrow, the next day, to discuss the issue. We, we brought it to them at the last meeting, the day after the last meeting.
So, I guess, Dave, are you gonna have the, they want a discussion with you, correct?
Yes.
Perfect.
Sorry? No, it's the staff, just attorneys to staff. We sent them the information, we have questions of them. Would it be appropriate to get another request, Mr. Chairman, since we're talking about this item? Would it be appropriate to get another request for another extension of, for the meeting or decision?
No extensions. Crazy, couldn't get one answer on a simple thing like that, that fast. Just deny it.
All right.
Okay.
I'm still trying to focus on the minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I wonder where that was said. So, if we may, just focus one step at a time.
All right, page two is done.
I'm assuming halfway down page two, the release of covenant on that A and R lot on Main Street of Bryce Lemon, we have not received anything from Clea on that, have we?
We received some information from, from Mr. Blair. I haven't had a chance to look at it before we left today. It was relative to the Phase Two bond, bond, the Phase One bond reduction, but I haven't taken a good look at that information. It came in late tonight. Sorry. All right, I do understand that Carl has not had a chance to finish his work on that, however, so I'm not sure that we have it.
Oh, so he doesn't have the bond work yet done yet, David?
It's my understanding that he's still working on that.
Okay, thanks. Thanks. On the third page, at the bottom, it should be sunset, not subset. Am I right?
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Although.
We do have.
We are subs.
We do, I did notice, though, the guy who lives on the Buffalo Farm, Jarvis, yeah.
Yeah.
Term limitation, the word sunset, is it sunset clause, is it in the article? Sunset clause? Or is that just a general statement, sunset clause?
Yeah.
It's just general, okay, so that's not really named, okay.
It's not in the bylaw, it just says.
So, the proposed sun, sunset, okay.
I just saw subset, that didn't make sense.
No, you're right, it's a typo. Other than that, I'm okay, even I didn't catch it. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes for April ninth, twenty nineteen.
For both, planning board and zoning?
The packet that I have right here, am I, turn to the page, I mean, another package.
It was page three. At the very top is zoning bylaw amendment review, joint meeting between planning board and planning board.
I didn't see any other mistakes in this. So, the complete set of minutes.
That's the planning board and the, oh, that's right, it's three.
Should be high. Planning board and the planning board.
Bylaw, so it should be a hyphen between bylaws.
Yeah. I'm not gonna worry about that.
No. All right.
I mean.
Second.
Everybody ready?
Yep.
Okay.
In favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's see, we already talked about the Turkey Hill.
Okay, can we repeat that? 'Cause all I heard was Turkey Hill.
Okay, uh, well, we haven't heard back from town council.
Okay, I do remember he wanted to combine those lots.
Yeah.
And. But have one lot separated.
Yeah.
That would still, that person's property.
The issue is, we haven't heard back from town council. Clea simply said, forget about an extension, just deny it.
Well, I, is he, if he's not gonna ask for an extension, I think he said that out of, I don't know. I don't know, I wanna, so. I think, I think tensions are a lot, there's just a lot going on. I don't know, he may have said that in jest, I don't know. He didn't have it.
Want me to go grab him and ask? 'Cause I have no problem doing that. Because it's up there, are we, are we, are we done with one and two, and we're on the A and Rs right now?
Right, and he thought that KP law should have had it done by now, and that's what ticked him off.
I, I agree, what are we paying them for, if they don't have it done in time, actually, but.
Have we, have.
Hey, we ran into the same thing before we had KP law.
Yes, yeah.
Not as often.
No. Not as often as right.
I think maybe we should ask in a, in a reduction of, you know, of monies. I mean, what are we paying, what are we paying them for, if they can't get back to us in the time we meant it?
Yeah.
There's no doubt, lawyers take a look at their workload and they set their own priorities.
Well, well, then they should hire some others.
Then they bill them.
They inhale and they bill you.
Yeah.
I apologize for my reaction, I got pissed.
I understand.
Are you going for an extension?
Yeah, but I don't wanna put an ex, I'd rather have you deny it, and then, at least, at least I'm owing twenty-one days, at the rate I'm going, I'll never know. Just deny it, that way I, you know, you have to make a decision. I, you know what I mean? These guys, they're gonna, I've been asking them for, for a decision on a superextension permit that fits, I went in front of you for lot one, John Roberts Drive. It fits the entire criteria, but all the exceptions that were written in the supermortuary. I still haven't got an answer from them, and that was October. So, when are they gonna get an answer on this? They, they're terrible. They bill you tons of money and they don't give you an answer. So, take the twenty-one days, if it takes longer than that, then deny it. I mean, I'm not saying that to be a dick, I'm telling you that. Excuse me, Maryland, I apologize. I'm saying, it's, it's the only way I'm gonna get an answer.
If I could on this, on this one, I'm directly involved with this A and R. I have a conference, a call scheduled tomorrow with the attorney on this. I'm not directly involved with the other one, as you know. I expect an answer from them tomorrow. If they can't give me an answer, I will probably gonna, I'm gonna relate to concerns.
So, let me tell you, let me tell you my situation, okay? I've got a customer that I'm building a house on the lot, that can't get title insurance. Unless you do this. So, two weeks ago, we all knew that, we were gonna wait two weeks, everybody gets an extension, we'll get it right to the lawyers, you got it right to the lawyers, no answer. We're gonna get an answer tomorrow, great. I mean, it's, it's just not right. It's just not right. I mean, fine, if that's the case, what can I say, except for just deny it, if twenty-one days come and they don't give you the answer, I don't care.
How about if we don't get an answer tomorrow, we'll deny it?
Fun. That'll make the clock tick.
I think the clock is still ticking on this. So, it might be constructively improved. Which could result in a zoning violation if we don't have an answer to the question.
Deny it. You're right.
This is my opinion to the chair. Let David take the meeting, and you can, without an open meeting viol, without an open meeting violation, send out what was in your discussion to the board, correct? Am I correct in that assumption, or am I making a mistake?
I can do that, that's fine. As long as the board doesn't have any discussion.
Correct.
Amongst itself, with respect to what is transmitted.
We're just taking in information, and then if we need to, we can discuss with you, Norm, if we need to have a special meeting or something like that, to get this resolved.
Well, we're probably gonna have to have a special meeting anyway.
Because of the, so we could take, put this on the agenda and handle it in time, too. That's, that's my point.
That's a good point.
I mean, as far as, David, from your perspective here, I'm told by my attorney that the only real issue is frontage, not area. It has the required fifty feet of frontage. What do you need to know from the attorney? Fifty feet and five thousand square feet, but the fifty feet, the only thing that the, the planning board is responsible for is the frontage. I've already got a building permit, I'm building on the thing. It has nothing to do, the only thing I'm trying to do is get title insurance, which I can't get, unless I have you guys.
They're a road, and that's where we're going, trying to be. Yeah. Front with the other people that own the other two pieces of property, whether or not. I agree.
There's no, it has, first of all, it has way over the minimum frontage. Second of all, the people that own the property haven't been notified anyway. It, this doesn't require it, A and Rs don't require that. The only thing it requires for an A and R is it has sufficient frontage. It has way more than sufficient frontage. I don't know why he won't sign it. I don't know why it won't sign. It, it, it should be signed, it, really, I mean.
It doesn't have the A and R for, for that zone, does it, if I'm not mistaken?
It has a required frontage, so that's all that matters.
But George is, if I remember reading that, his, his brief, so to speak, he was taking, um, what the heck was I gonna say? He, he's, um, using grandfathered, um, turkey, or grandfathered.
Uh, language.
Yeah, the lots, and I just, I, I would have no problem if that single lot, this is my opinion, and that's why one of the attorneys, if that single lot, that not all of them combined was the lot that you were looking for the approval on. But I got the impression, based on that A and R, that there was a combination of lots.
It was, but they also said non-buildable on it.
Yeah, but they were all being combined into one A and R. And that was my problem, is that they were, this is again, and, and all I want to do is KP to tell me I'm wrong, I'd love to hear I'm wrong.
How hard would it be for them to do that? Ten weeks? They've had it for two weeks already, that's what I'm saying.
But I'm telling you, the, the only thing, and Dave, I mean, from a planning standpoint, the only thing required of the planning board is to make sure that it has the required frontage on the street.
It's the building inspector that gives you the building permit, which I already have. It's already being built, the thing's framed, I'm plastering it, I think. It's crazy not to give me, it, it doesn't make any sense whatsoever, and I get you.
Our building inspector could be in trouble if this thing gets denied, but that's not outside our concern.
Under zoning, there's, there's a, um, automatic merger under zoning. All the building lots already merging. They're already merged together. So there's an automatic merger status under the zoning. Automatically merged.
So tomorrow is a phone call, you're, you're gonna be talking with KP Law about this?
Yes, I'm gonna be talking to KP Law about this, at ten o'clock tomorrow, unless they, if not, let me just put it this way. I went back, I, they offered to talk to you tomorrow or Thursday, I put out ten. I haven't checked my email since. It's either that, or the worst case is Thursday.
So, okay, all right, I mean, I, I don't know what.
I think if they had a, I think if they had a ready answer, they would have said, why, why do you have this before us? I think they have some questions. I don't know what they are until I, I have the call tomorrow.
I understand, I mean, it just took so, so long to do it, it's just, it's fine, have the call, I don't care, I mean, I, I don't, whatever you have to do tonight to do it, just if you have to deny it, deny it. I'm not giving an extension, 'cause it's crazy, I'm not gonna tow to that stinking law firm that doesn't ever get back to you. It took forever just to get the tri-party, it's for Bryce, oh, speaking of that, did you get my email with all that stuff on it?
I got your email late in the day, didn't have a chance to respond to it. I think if there's gonna be another meeting before town meeting, that's the prerogative of the chair, you can set it up, and these items will be put on the agenda.
When would that, 'cause the next meeting is not until, scheduled until what, thirteenth of April or something?
If we could, just, the board chairman doesn't know what you're referring to.
Apologize.
I, can you, might be, since you got into it, can you just give a brief description to Norm, so he understands what is you're talking about? That email came in to me late today, didn't have a great chance to digest it. We in or talk to the chairman about it, so if you could just elaborate on it, that'd be great.
Do I have, is that okay?
To the chair, let's get, let's get this A and R closed out, then move on to another subject. That's all I wanna do, is let's, let's take one, like, to Sean's point, let's take one thing at a time. So if we're done with the A and R, and we, and we can, move on, I'm okay with that, I just wanna make sure we're done with it.
Subdivision, Quinn report, which basically doesn't say a whole heck of a lot.
I'm, I'm sorry, what is the final disposition of the A and R? Will this be heard at another meeting, before town meeting, or on the, on the meeting on the May eleventh, or what are we doing with this?
We're gonna set up another meeting for, because of the by, the bylaw, we have to, you know.
You're gonna unilaterally discuss this without the request for an extension? You're gonna take this without a request for an extension, or you're gonna deny it tonight, what's, what's the?
I thought after the phone call.
We'll take, we'll take it without a request for an extension.
Right.
We can do that legally?
I don't think so.
Okay, all right.
You have twenty-one days.
Wow.
And I gave you an extension till tonight, so it's fine.
So let me ask this.
It was still him to, it was, e, e, even if we can't do that, yes, it would allow him to, uh, you know, petition that it was constructively approved. And I'm gonna say, and I'm gonna say you won't do that.
I'm not gonna do that.
So let me just, for my edification, so, because the extension was till tonight, the twenty-one day clock starts tomorrow at, or tonight at twelve oh one, correct?
I have to bring it to the clerk, I'm not gonna do it.
No, 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 I'm just saying, but I'm, I'm just trying to get a feel for this, is that correct?
No. The, the, the extension date on the form says.
All right, till tonight, four twenty-three, phone four nine, to tonight, four twenty-three.
Okay, so the, the original date that we had to act on it was prior to that.
Okay, so it's been pushed out to four twenty-three, where the actual twenty-one days starts, the clock starts, because we didn't get an extension, correct?
The time is up.
The time is over, right?
Tonight.
So automatically gets approved after twenty-one days.
Wow, I'm not sure I'm cool with that.
Wow, doesn't that sound like KP is gonna get slapped?
Is it sure?
Yes, they should.
Mm-hmm.
They have put, they have put the town of Rutland in a position.
Under the toilet.
And somebody's reaching for the handle.
Which is my concern with this.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at.
Norm, can you, uh, just say again, your, why are your concerns of the property, if they were already combined, um, through the assessor, right, Clea? I mean.
They're already combined, there's an eighty-one X, which doesn't require planning board approval, it's like the same thing as an easement plan, you can put an easement plan on, just signed by a, by a registered land surveyor, so. There's an eighty-one X that was put on, that automatically merged all the lots.
Okay.
So they were automatically merged, so all the lots are merged. Problem is, that there's two of them.
Yeah, they aren't really connected.
Well, they're connected, but you can't get, I can't get title insurance, so what I'm trying to do is unconnect them and call them not buildable. You still have a parcel that's buildable there, but.
No, I get it, I get, and your concerns was, because of the prop, the, either, the neighbors?
I'm taking my word for it.
Because of the neighbors, or?
Neighbor's rights.
No, not so much yours, George's, George's, uh, uh, brief, I just, I just, the one thing I want is I's dotted, T's crossed, that's all I'm asking. And if KP comes back and says, yes, that's within mass general law, then I'm fine, but I just want somebody, I'm not the expert on mass general law, that book's that thick and that's not my expertise. Now, to Dick's point, twenty-one days, yeah, that's a little bit, what I was gonna suggest is, is either David or Norm have a discussion with, um, Mike about the timeliness of KP Law. That was the only, that was gonna be one of my suggestions to, to Clea's point, is maybe we, we need to have a disc, or, what's the word I'm looking for? A discussion or a, a point to the town administrator that he needs to reiterate to KP Law, we need timely responses, that's all I'm asking.
And so what does that leave Mr. Blair, he just?
It, it, he, he gets his permit, he gets everything to go, because it's, it's. It fell into that, that twenty-one days.
Twenty-one day, okay.
So therefore, we, the town, had a question, or questions that needed answers, and they did not get back to us.
That's my frustration.
And right then and there, that's, that's, that's not good.
I'm, I'm beginning to think what we probably, since we, we seem to be waiting quite a lot, we probably need to, and again, this would have to be probably through Mike. But set up a distinct protocol, when we request KP Law's advice. Here's the subject, okay, here's what we want you to look into, here's when we must have our answer.
Give him a timeline, yeah.
In, your suggestion?
By the date.
If I may, through the chair, ask you.
Apologies, but, but you guys have done this in the past. If KP Law's okay with it, then you can vote to sign it, and then either I can run it around to you guys, or somebody can sign it, you know, or somebody can stop into the office and sign it. Maybe it gets done that way if you, if you want, but if, if not, I mean, you know, if you're gonna have another meeting before, three weeks from now.
Oh, yeah, we are.
You know, you know, but the thing is, it's just, I can't, I, I've got the house almost built, I can't borrow a penny to build it. Nothing can happen till I get these, these title things worked out. I thought last time when we did this, I, I was, I was explicit too, I said, these guys never get back to you, and I knew it was gonna happen, and they blew it off again, and that's why I'm so irritated. You know, and, and I'm, I don't, I'm just asking, the, it's fine, you can vote it and sign it later, but.
I'm okay with that, because we do it on Concom all the time. Joe hunts us down, we sign this, I've signed many paper in my driveway.
One thing, Mr. Chairman, if I may, in every town that I go to, that I deal in, the planning board chairman can sign an A and R in his league. How come he can't do it in this town?
Sorry, I'm not ready for that responsibility. Hold on.
No, but they, they, it's always, you know, you know, the, the attorney's giving, giving back the information, but everywhere, like Holden, check and sign, Shrewsbury, check and sign, I think Chappell, check and sign.
Okay.
Yeah, I've never had an issue with that, ever, but.
I sign for all my bills, that's all.
If I could have everybody please, I'm gonna make an emotion to, uh, have Dave get in touch with KP Law, if he gets the decision to track us down, to have a sign, as Mr. Blair said. Guess it's up to you to make it, as a second.
Yeah, okay, well, we, we don't need him to track us down.
Well, no.
He needs to inform us of the, of the decision, we're not sending him on a treasure hunt.
To the chair, that was my point about, I asked Dave about, you know, can we get, if he can send us out the, the, if you wanna call it the minutes of the conference call, that way we'll have the information. So if we have a meeting in three days or two days, we can put this on the, we get seventy-two hours in my eyes, or forty-eight?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight, we could put it on the agenda and get it signed at that meeting and be done with this.
Yeah.
That's, that's all I made, that's the only point I wanna make, because if we've got the information in our hand from Dave's conference call, we, we, we can make the decision. I mean, if, if they had a couple of questions in it, and Dave can answer them, or if it's something we can answer, we could take care of it and get this thing signed.
So, prefer Dave to notify us by email, right?
That's all I want, just a minute, minutes of the.
You know, wow. Have you ever done that before?
So what do you wanna do?
And I.
What I, what I just asked?
No, actually, no, we, we usually take it out of meeting, or we'd have a vote first, and then you sign after the vote, whatever you guys. Meanwhile, you have the constructive green issue, if you're not concerned with that, that's fine.
I am, but. I, I do also just want to make a note, I guess I'm gonna say for the record, uh, that we're willing to do this be, only because it is an exceptional circumstance.
And we have not had lawyers that cooperated.
Yeah.
Okay, in other words, this is not gonna become a routine thing, okay, that applicants come around to each of us to have us sign documents, be it A and Rs or any others.
I agree.
So it sounds to me like the board is inclined to approve the A and R. If you're gonna have it signed, it seems like you're gonna approve it, um.
Fifteen years ago, I can remember doing that.
Yes. And we put a stop to it.
Yes. All right, what about, do we need a second? Sean's motion. He put a motion up.
Yeah.
Second.
Any discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, one other quick one, we have not collected a fee on this matter, so we're gonna leave that to determine.
Decline because of non-payment.
Can you have the fee brought tomorrow, Clea to?
I'll bring it all to the office tomorrow, I have the plan, I don't have the plan with me either.
You're on video still, so.
I know, I ain't heard it. The check is sitting on my table.
Oh, I've heard that before.
But you have, having a meeting, so we can talk about that, the, the release of covenant, that.
Well, since you're here, if the chair, if the chair would like to discuss that briefly, then feel free.
So I, you were asking for a release from covenant for the two lots on Main Street, which I provided today, and, um, I asked for a tri-party for a bond amount. I called Carl, he's no, no way in the world ready.
Right.
So, uh, I was wondering if at the next meeting, I was hoping that you could sign it in escrow tonight, but were you having another meeting then? I, you know, 'cause if, if this building permit thing goes through, I've got houses sold that, I, I mean, I, it's, it, and I don't have release from covenant, I can't get a permit, it's a, it's gonna put me in, I got penises, I, I, it's gonna, I, I, it's, it's a nightmare. This thing is a, just a totally ridiculous, totally ridiculous. But anyways, specific to that, if at the next meeting, then you can, you can get a sign, I'll just get everything into Willie, and if it, if you guys release the covenant, hey, go, pop.
Sidewalks paved on phase one?
Sidewalks at July first, you told me. I wrote it down.
It was in the minutes.
It's in the minutes, too. And I got September for something else, too.
Good memory, you get, I, I distinctly remember that discussion.
Yes.
I do.
I do.
Yeah.
You got that one now?
And you have to September to get the rail trail thing fixed.
The rail trail.
Yep, two dates.
Yep, those are the dates, I wrote them down.
Yes. Page two.
Okay.
Just up from the bottom.
Are we ready to move on?
Thank you.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Don't recommend that managed growth by law either, that's my recommendation, please.
We're going down to zero. So you're lucky, senior citizens.
Yeah, but are you gonna, are you gonna try to, is that, is it ten permits in a year, or for the senior housing, or are you gonna, are you gonna talk about that maybe?
I think we're gonna talk about that.
Mike made a good point.
At least thirty-six. You wouldn't do that in a year, you wouldn't do that in one year.
No, but it's, it's, I mean, that's, that's a lot, you know, if, you know, if they're duplexes, they count in each one, each building.
That's correct.
There's two, yeah.
Two buildings.
That's five buildings.
Well, my only argument, I'm through the chair, with, with Mike's thing, is it doesn't take away services.
Yes, it does.
'Cause what if they all have a heart attack in one month, everybody?
They paid for it. They paid for that, I got, I got my.
You don't go for everyone's rights for free.
My son went for it, and smashed his head off, and it cost me two thousand dollars.
That's right, you do get, you do get a bill.
But if you can't pay for it, the town's gotta pick it up, that's where Sess had money.
You should be shipped out.
It should be a lot of money.
No burnout schools, no burnout in the roads, there's no burnout.
All right. Hey, onward, onward, please, please. Bryce Lemon, Cullen, and Engineering Report.
Is that it? I missed it, I didn't see it. It hasn't come in yet, has it? Bryce Lemon, Engineering Report.
Is that this thing right here? April twelfth?
Twelve. Ooh, number four, way down again.
Anything else really particularly exciting in there?
Number four, what do we gotta do with that one, fourth bullet?
The earthwork?
Yep.
That's an earthwork board thing, then, I should say.
No, it's part of the subdivision.
Okay.
I love, tell me, somebody tell me if I'm wrong, I mean, that's part of the, the design of the subdivision, right?
Mm-hmm.
So that's under our purview, I think.
What, how, how, what's the law on how high they can be? If they fall within the law?
They, they had to change it, I thought.
I do know that someone built a lot, right there in Palmigus, said that the whole sides were sliding during rain.
He just left.
I don't know. But, yeah. No, hey, no, I, whatever, whatever, I mean, I'm not an engineer, so I don't know, but the law said you could put it to this high, and this is the height that, you know, you go to, hey, change the law, don't.
The subdivision has different laws than A and R, so that was my.
The thing, the thing is, that this is under construction, so it's, you know, whatever grade there is there, it's probably not the final grade. So.
Well, it's, it's the stabilization, Norm, that I've got the question.
Yeah, I know.
That's the only thing, 'cause I really.
That's what homeowners insurance is for, I guess.
Little houses.
Yeah. No, I, I just don't want Bear Hill all over again, without things being stabilized.
Sliding down into the wetlands right there?
Yeah, slid into the pond, and now it's a complete mess. So that's the only thing I'm asking, if, if, 'cause Carl didn't really, he recommends it, but he didn't say what.
What to do?
Yeah, that's, there's my tough part.
He cuts, be stabilizers looped.
Well, notify Mr. Blair to take action on.
Bullet four.
Bullet four.
Thanks.
Cullen, Report.
So it'll be up to Dave to let him know tomorrow.
I'll take care of that tomorrow.
And then the last bullet, Norm, was my other question that I had in that report. What are we gonna do, I mean, it says confirm, but how's that gonna happen? 'Cause I don't want another Bear Hill where the road starts collapsing.
Well, it must be confirmed by Quinn Engineering, and will be coordinated with Craig Bacon. Well, must be confirmed by Quinn Engineering and will be coordinated with Craig Bacon.
It's partially confirmed and will be coordinated. Yeah, but.
So.
Must be confirmed, confirmed by who?
I'm okay with that, but how are you gonna?
How are you gonna confirm it?
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at.
I mean, and who's, who's gonna confirm it?
Carl is.
Okay.
All right, Carl's gonna do that, all right, just.
So Craig, Craig is gonna go out there and dig some holes?
And then Carl be in the other.
And then Carl'll take basically a test, a test from.
Like an auger thing, but kind of.
I'm fine with that. Okay, good. I just wanna make sure that's, that's, 'cause it says.
Who's curious listening, what's, what's the question?
It's, here's what it says. The depth of gravel placed in the roadway must be confirmed and will be coordinated with Craig Bacon, as suggested by Mr. Blair.
The gravel base?
Yes. Yeah, just make sure it's got the right gravel base.
Okay, yeah.
'Cause it wasn't confirmed that it has to be.
It would be eighteen inches.
Eighteen inches?
Yeah, that's it.
Just has to be confirmed?
No problem.
Okay.
Okay, I guess that's it.
Okay.
Did Carl, Norm, give you a date for the bonding and all that stuff? When he was able, gonna be able to pull it off, or Dave, either one, did he give any dates?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I don't have a date on that. He's still working on it. I would, hopefully you have it as soon as possible.
Okay. Unlike certain law firms, I fully trust that.
Quinn's always done a good job.
Does what they're supposed to, when they're supposed to, as fast as.
Whoever's watching this, you know, KP's getting a lot of bad rep right now.
Press.
Yeah.
I like the old guys, myself.
You were bad enough.
No, I, I, I like the old guys, but, but, but.
I had my share.
Okay. Okay, realize we've already done the hearings, however, just so we don't forget it, I would like a lawyer to send the zoning amendment regarding the industrial district language to be forwarded to the selectmen or to the town administrator, whichever you want, for inclusion for talent with a favorable recommendation.
So moved for what you said.
So seconded.
So, so third.
And once again, the same thing for the multi-paneling residence district. The vote that we forward it to Board of Selectmen for inclusion on the ballot with a favorable recommendation.
So moved.
So seconded.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Everything should go like that.
Yes. Take notes, you guys.
Only thing I was gonna say is I, just to cover, do we vote on the first one, or do we just motion it and second it?
We're saying combined.
Oh, combined, okay, thank you. All right, so we're done with that, that?
We're down to administrative secretary update.
Actually, Mr. Chair, we have a decision for Spruce Hill, which was drafted and forwarded to the board, which is complete and ready to be signed tonight.
We're just hanging out there.
Yeah. We just like this so much.
Be at the front of the class, I like that.
I would say that that was as promised.
Can't do it, it's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda.
Say what? Yeah, it is. It's number four.
Very good, that's great.
Right above the zoning bylaw amendment hearings. Oh, you're right. No, it says it's right there.
Closed hearing.
Closed hearing. Special Permit Spruce Hill Thirty-four, it's there.
Business initiative.
Do you need to make a motion?
If, if it's, if there's no issues with, with the draft decision?
I don't know, I review it. I, I guess the only thing that I would note is, I, I think Dave reviewed just about everything in this whole project, including what brand of kitchen sinks they're gonna be putting in.
Hole. But.
Our motion is signed. Let's take.
Okay, I have a motion to sign the notice of decision.
I will second.
And that motion's a vote to approve the decision and sign it.
Didn't we already approve it?
No, the board disclosed the hearing the last time.
Oh, okay, okay. So to approve the permit.
This is a signature for the special permit, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. 'Cause I read through the decision, I was in favor of it.
So motioned.
Okay, so I have a motion, I think, here, second, I think.
You did.
Any decision?
Only thing, Dave, you didn't put in here is the excess streetlights requirement.
Knock it off.
In, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Gotta take my shots when I can.
You have the A and R?
No.
Yeah, there's also an A and R request for, for Zero Main Street and Milbrook Road. I think it was four hundred for the A and R.
Thank you. I know, how are we gonna do minutes in there all the time if we have no place, no big table to sign things?
Yeah, four hundred, 'cause you're, you're affecting two lots when you do it, so it's three plus the.
We have post-it notes? We don't even have any post-it notes in here.
We don't even have our special pen. Don't we?
Looking for this.
Uh, this is the, this is the right, this is the right type of pen. So.
Put my name on it.
You see this little one?
It's a Sharpie.
It's, does it matter?
Almost.
Okay, well, it's not really thin Sharpie, but.
The only thing we don't have is, do you have the Form A and everything else?
Yes.
All right, great, thank you. I assume you guys did.
Yep, the Form A. And the letter. Why we'd like to do this, we requested.
Yep, good, thank you.
These are like the most important, you care.
No, yeah, I was looking at your posts during that.
Hold on a second, I got a Sharpie in my hand.
No, we have a Sharpie. Just not that really thin one.
Oh.
I guess it doesn't matter. So it's just fat signatures.
Oh, okay, I, that's all, that's what I found handy.
Okay, no, yeah.
At least it's not a, it's a big fat.
Yeah, yeah. Post-it notes, we could use a post-it note.
Right?
There's a smudge.
All this Form A.
Do we sign it first?
This is the piece of property that this whole senior housing project is on.
Mm-hmm.
This is remaining land. And at this point, it's not a buildable lot, it's just remaining land. So this is the project. And it's frontage on the aisles, so. And what's the, excuse me, what was, what's that gonna be? Right now, it's backland. Non-buildable?
Says right here, not a buildable lot.
Good.
Yep. Not a buildable lot. For now, he goes and gets a special permit and. So where's the trail? Oh, that's with the special permit. Trail will go, right like this. Yep, right like that.
Right next to this, right there, boom.
You just say go, they'll have it done in a week. All right. Now. I'll lay it off on nothing. Now, how, how much higher are you expecting that there pond to come up?
I don't think it comes up at all.
No, whatever, the dam, that dam's a pretty rough shape. I know. The viewers are taking care of it. Well, that's what I'm hearing. They're gonna kinda fill it in a little bit more, so the water will come up more. That'd be perfect.
Right now, it's not an issue.
Very shallow, as it is.
I know it.
The water's better. The most we found ice fishing out there was four and a half feet.
Yeah, yeah. Like I said at the last meeting, my, my stepmother walked across it to go to school. When she used to, when she used to live down there.
You know, eat those fish, do you?
iPod is the change.
I was gonna say, put it back here.
Non-buildable lots.
Yep.
Yeah. Addition. So is that, that doesn't affect the special permit, it doesn't? No, okay.
It does not affect the special permit. The special permit was granted for this front piece up here,
Perfect.
which was defined accordingly, including the density amount for dwelling units that could be produced, and so forth and so on. So that's been accounted for.
So why is that being added to, I'm confused.
This is getting cut off from the big piece. This is the whole senior housing project, right? Yeah, sixteen point seven.
Was this part of the original senior project?
No.
No.
No? It was always off of it, but it was never.
It was part of the lot that the senior project was off.
It was part of the land, but it was always shown that this is not part of.
So let's say hypothetical, it's not gonna be built now, but later, what would you have to do, cut a, cut a road through it? Oh, done, that's, okay, what's that, miles?
Yep.
All right.
This could be in the state law. That's right. It has the potential of in the state law.
With the seven hundred thousand dollar house.
Eight hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Prices of things are starting to get that way.
Then it's zero.
And then, but then you'll get, your taxes taken off of it.
That's right.
'Cause it, it's an abatement. Yeah.
Do I have a motion to endorse the plan?
So motioned.
Second.
Any discussion?
None.
In favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna maybe suggest that we move the mile hour over onto the podium.
That's a good idea.
And we can each go over there.
First, I have to get their, I have their signature, I have to add the signature sheet, I have to make, I have to add the vote on the decision itself. I expect to have this filed with the town clerk by Thursday at the latest. Then from that point, the clock starts ticking. So I'm moving this as quickly as possible. As I try to do along the way. I know.
Trust me. Oh, yeah, yeah. Glad now.
It does say she's over it, though. Who gets to date it?
Oh, we don't have a scan, do we?
Not the other. All right. Jake, you get to state this.
Is that signature sheet out here somewhere?
Fly away.
A little hearing?
No, the signature sheet for that decision.
You have to carry it.
No, it's in the back.
We only got seventeen minutes and I run out of film.
In the back, hurry, just post the shirt in front of it.
Did you have that signature sheet for that decision?
Was anybody?
Yeah, who's that?
I did not. I had a signature sheet I passed a norm early on.
No.
That was, well, it was blue. That was in my packet. It was for, that's the proposed street names. That wasn't it.
Okay. Everybody look, anybody have the signature sheet?
There's.
For the special permit.
Oh, hold on a second, yeah, I do, I gotta sign it.
I did, I will.
Okay.
This thing, right? How you got a full heap?
I have a full load.
I don't think we have, do you have any small set of those?
I don't have a small set.
I don't have a set.
I'm rolling from now.
Pass that down, sir. Found.
Great, thank you.
Adjourned?
Not yet, not quite.
Real set, I guess. Now that piece of paper, what happens with that now? The decision, what happens with that decision?
Yeah, I'm gonna have this decision filed with the town clerk as possible, hopefully by Thursday at the latest. And then you'll notify the butters and notify the applicant.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So, that's on the agenda that I had was.
Secretary, I hate to share. Yeah, my hips are hurting.
Was update on administrative assistant, 'cause tomorrow is he or she's special day.
Okay, I'll let.
Special what?
Tomorrow's administrative assistant day.
Who's it?
Which one?
Annie.
The old one? I saw her a week ago past Sunday. Margaret, on the rail trail.
Oh, yeah, Margaret Norwich?
Yeah, with her husband and the dog. Going across the bridge on Connecticut River, and I saw this woman come in towards me with the dog pulling her leg on the bicycle. And I said, "That's cheating." And I got up close to her, Dick Williams, and I. So I'll stop back and talk to her later on.
People are still coming into the town to enjoy our resources, so.
Yeah, but he was up in Connecticut.
Oh, you were in Connecticut, oh, okay.
I was in turnip walls. So do we have an admin? Okay.
Okay, I'll let Dave explain the secretary situation, please.
Doesn't sound good.
Right, so we checked references on the applicant that we talked about last time. Generally speaking, we didn't get into, we, we let the board know that we had an applicant who we thought would be qualified, so we pursued that. The applicant ended up declining and indicated that she was not available. I think scheduling was probably an issue. You know, they worked it Tuesday, help be in the office for a certain amount of time, which is necessary, and also help staff, you know, at night on Tuesdays. So our, our short-term plan is to work internally with existing staff, to see if existing staff, if the main responsibilities can be divided up to three different staff persons to have help on each of those items on a temporary basis, while we pursue a longer-range plan, which involves full-time staff who works for the town currently. So that's in flux. We're not gonna re-advertise this after consulting with, with the chair. We're gonna try to work internally and make an offer, which is premature, because we haven't had that discussion with somebody who currently works full-time.
Can I suggest that you bring that individual's name before the board before we make a decision?
I'd have to check with the personnel procedures. This is a little bit out of my depth.
Well, you're right, I'm not gonna vote.
Yes, I'm getting it, Dick.
You mean the full, the full, the final, or long-term solution?
Long-term solution, yeah, yeah, yeah. The short terms I'm fine with, because that's just covering. It's a long term I wanna know.
I, whatever is agreeable and whatever's legal, I, I will talk to the TA to see what's required, and if so, then we're working with the chairs, we always do, we'll, we'll do what is, is allowed.
Okay.
I'm not sure I can, I can, I know the answer.
I'm not, no, I'm not looking for an answer, it's just a suggestion. And if I'm, if it can't be done, it can't be done, it's just my.
Yeah, it's, it can't be done.
Well, there's all kinds of new EO laws.
Yeah, that's why you get rid of the TAs, there are too many policies. Good read.
Okay, so motion to adjourn?
No.
No, yet?
Uh, we need another meeting, I think.
Yes.
Yes.
So.
We need forty-eight hours to post it, right?
Yeah, and. I'm not interested in Friday, really. I don't know about any of you.
I can tell you guys, and just my opinion, you got me until next Friday, then the following two weeks, I'm probably gonna be on the road. And I don't know if it's two days, one day, I just.
We're, we're, we're stuck with next week.
Okay, I'm, I'm here on next week.
Monday?
Our meeting is.
Do we wanna do Monday night?
You know, uh, I'm just trying to think. I don't think I have a problem any night.
I don't have any problem Monday night.
Monday night's usually good for me, 'cause Tuesday is, after all, Monday's nightmares.
Tuesday I have coffee until six, seven o'clock at night.
I don't have Concom Tuesday, 'cause it was four.
That's correct.
So, yeah, Monday or Tuesday.
Monday work for you.
Monday works for me.
Yeah, I can be available on Monday. You're going to do it in the park, you're going to do it in the parking lot?
Well, is our room taken? What, Monday? Our room isn't taken over.
You mean at, at the ANX, you think you're access to this?
Well, it's just going to be us, it's just.
Oh, yeah.
Just us.
Never mind. I didn't, never mind.
Yeah, no, this is, basically, it's just to.
Understood, okay, yeah.
And, and we.
We won't have any of this stuff here either, which will be great.
I got my nice hard chair.
Right, guys?
So Monday.
Monday?
At the ANX.
The ANX, 6:30.
6:30.
6:30.
Because this has, they, following that meeting, this has to go to board of selectmen.
Yep. So we got to hash everything out?
Yes.
Okay. Marilyn, should the bylaw subcommittee be there with us, so it'll be a group? I'm just asking, they put the effort into it.
The bylaw subcommittee, that's, that would be wrong.
Just Bonnie.
Just Bonnie? I don't mind her input, I think she has always good input.
Oh, no, I think she does, too.
No. I just wanted to make, make it aware, since she's put effort in.
You, you're going to notify her?
I will.
Okay, good.
So you'll post it as planning board and bylaw subcommittee?
Yeah.
Okay.
6:30?
6:30.
The ANX 6:30?
Yeah.
Combined meeting, okay.
Excellent. I just think she's put effort in, so she.
She had very good points.
We heard an awful lot of stuff tonight.
Yes. Yeah.
Took some good notes, I think.
I, uh.
I saw Dave writing a lot, so.
I just, what I didn't like is the same old argument, Norm, that I heard 17 years ago about.
Let's get out of here, let's let them shut down.
Yeah, okay.
Are you going to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion.
Aye. Good night, everybody.